Mayor Bennett, we're ready.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our visitors and I would like roll call please.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Here.
Counselor Randolph?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Palam?
Here.
Uh, Mayor Bennett, we're still waiting on Counselor Gore but we, you have a, you have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
You have a quorum, six to uh zero.
Okay. At this time is there a me- motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that we go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Sections two point two dash three seven eleven A three to discuss and or consider the disposal of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and bargaining strategy of the city.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton seconded by Counselor Palam. Any discussion?
Yeah.
No, I don't see any lights, roll call.
Count- Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palam?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rand-
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, can you explain to the audience we'll be back so they, cause some people came earlier than-
They came early. Well, yes, so this evening in with our most recent events and the loss of a member, a former member of council, we will go into closed session and then when we return out of closed session, we will move forward and um pay tribute. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I don't see any lights, roll call.
Count- Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palam?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rand-
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, can you explain to the audience we'll be back so they, cause some people came earlier than-
They came early. Well, yes, so this evening in with our most recent events and the loss of a member, a former member of council, we will go into closed session and then when we return out of closed session, we will move forward and um pay tribute. Is that in? Thank you. Thank you.
And I had to wipe the headstones all, you know, the tall one, it was everything I've blown up against.
So somebody's going to be getting in trouble for this?
Yes.
Mr. Walton, can you come in for a minute? I'm sorry, we got a minute.
Mics are on.
Well, we still have a minute.
Okay, I know, I'm just saying, Mike, I want you to be aware.
Are you lost? Are you lost? You want to sit here? You're welcome.
I'm not.
What did I call you?
Okay, we're at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
I move that we come out of closed session.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Is this to come out of closed session?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yes.
Counselor Denton. Counselor Denton. Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven to zero to come out of closed.
Thank you. Will you read the certification?
Yes, I'm sorry. Certification pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712D where only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Half a yes.
I wasn't there for the entire.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have.
You skipped over me. And my answer is yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Randolph.
You just want to.
My apologies.
Stating there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I will move to, we have work session this afternoon or evening, and I'm going to move to, or send this over to Director Griffin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Parton, and all members of City Council. Tonight, we had two work sessions on the agenda, but the first applicant has withdrawn his application, so we'll go right into work session two. And that is for rezoning of 303 North Third Avenue. And I will bring this up on the screen.
I'm getting, I'm getting to give you permission.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan.
The applicants are Andrew and Larry Spivey, and again, they're asking to rezone 303 North Third Avenue. It's also identified as sub parcel 011-02-0620, and to amend the official zoning map from the Business Limited Commercial District, which is B2. Let me move on to this. Here we go. B2 to Residential High Density Office, which is RO4. The Spiveys own the Davida Dialysis Center, and they have been using this, this structure as an office. And they are now, one of the brothers is retiring, and the other would like to sell this property as residential. The Planning Commission has reviewed this application. They also had a work session to discuss this. And if you look at the zoning map, you will see that coming out of the B1, going on to West Broadway and West City Point Road, the properties are zoned B2. And this is consistent from the B1 district all the way up to around 15th Avenue. It's consistently B2. And so he's asking to rezone the parcel here that is highlighted in the blue. The property is in Ward 1. The use is commercial, and it was built in 1920, and the original square footage, footage is 1,076. At their meeting on October the 2nd, the Planning Commission voted to deny this request, and they gave three reasons. The first is because it would not allow the continuity of commercial zoning along West Broadway. The current zoning is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does call for this area to be commercial. And there was no indication by the applicant that there was an attempt to jointly list the property with the corner property, which is empty. So if I go back to this map here, right beside the highlighted area, this is also zoned business. That property is vacant, and the Planning Commission thought that the applicant could have gone to this adjacent property owner and requested this property to be residential also. Mr. Spivey did contact me and let me know that he could not attend the meeting tonight, and I only met one brother, so are you the other brother? Okay, just to make sure. So he is not here, but this would come up at a public hearing sometime in October. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Counselor Pelham, and then Counselor Randolph.
How is this not, is this not spot zoning?
Counselor Pelham, can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, is this, how is this different from spot zoning?
If it was approved and, and planning, and this was approved, the Planning Commission and staff would see this as spot zoning. There was another reason why the Planning Commission thought that he should ask the adjacent property owner to, to rezone. I will say.
Wouldn't that should not be listed in there as a reason for rejection?
I, I will say this also, right next to, if you look there, the, the brown area, all of this brown is RO4. So he's really asking to join the RO4. So in that case, actually, it's, it's not spot zoning. He was asking to be RO4. Right next to it is RO4. This brown area is RO4.
Okay, but that would still, wouldn't just be in alignment with RO4.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Counselor Randolph.
Ms. Griffin, I certainly understand the comprehensive plan and the zoning based on the B2 and the desire to continue to have businesses in that tract. However, we don't seem to have made any kind of provision for how to change that when councils in the past have talked about not wanting businesses in housing. And that would be exactly what we're doing in that particular instance with his. So while I understand the overall concept, I don't know how we're transitioning to that. Could you help me understand that a little better?
Yes, one thing that the, the Planning Commission has discussed is what should be done with the zoning in the B Village.
Right.
And that is something that they want to tackle. They want it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. They've asked me to start putting work sessions on their agenda to tackle that. That has not happened yet. But they do realize that that is an issue. They had me go out to this corridor and look at all of the current uses. They were concerned about the same thing that you're saying. They had me specifically look at the second property end to see how many of those were offices, how many were residential. There were only three that were residential, and the rest were offices. So they did have me do a thorough analysis of all this area on B2 to consider, should this really be residential or should be a commercial? But they, they do recognize that this has to be a, a conversation that happens with the RO4 district. It has not happened yet.
So it brings us to this point where we've got a residential structure that doesn't lend itself well, and that we really don't want as a city to have a business in because it's truly a house at this point. Never has been a business, but has been historically a house. So we, we put the homeowner in a situation that we have zoned so that there are going to be some problems, and, but we don't have a solution for those problems.
Well, I will say this, the RO4 zoning district allows for offices and allows for residential.
Right.
So it was residential at some point.
Right.
It's just been in the last decade, he's used it as an office. They've used it as an office because it didn't have enough space at the center. So at some time, it was, it, it was a residential space. It just hasn't been used for that, for this, for that time.
And I agree with you and Counselor Pelham, I'm not one to want to spot zone. We, we're trying to get away from that, but at the same time, what situation are we putting the homeowner in? Had they put it together with the other parcel, then maybe somebody would be willing to buy both parcels and use it as an expanded business, but the.
Well, that was a question.
Still in business, correct?
No, that, that is vacant.
So the, the Dialysis Center is vacant?
No, no, not the Dialysis Center. So let me go back and show you.
I'm sorry.
So the Dialysis Center is.
One street over?
Yes.
Okay.
Dialysis Center is here.
Here at Point. You have a pointer.
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to try to use it. The IT director taught me how to use it, and I'm going to attempt to do it. So the Dialysis Center is here.
Where is here?
It's across.
Can you see the?
Third Avenue.
No, you.
You can't see what I'm doing.
Well, we can, it's just not in the right place.
To the, the little aqua box, to the right of that box is Little's Convenience, right?
Sorry, this is Dialysis Center here.
And the other side is the Dialysis Center, right?
Yes, Dialysis Center is here.
So to the left on the other side of Third is the Dialysis Center.
Yes.
So the vacant house, but that, how long has that been vacant, do you know?
I don't know how long it's been vacant.
So we've got two structures that look like houses that have been used, but we don't have a solution for those first two to be zoned, but not have structures sitting on them currently that really are conducive to that type.
And, and that's why the Planning Commission asks the applicant, have you gone to the adjacent property owner?
Right.
And considered joining properties, maybe him buying yours or you buying his to, to do a business? Or would you want to tear both houses down and, and put up a, a larger house, you know, to, to rezone? So that was something that he had not considered, and he didn't give any indication that he was, would consider it in the past, in the future. So I'm, I'm not saying it was easy. It was not easy for staff. It wasn't easy for the Planning Commission. But that was a conclusion they made based on those three criteria.
Yeah.
But it, it took a while. They, they had a public hearing, they had a work session, and then they had another meeting to make the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I am, I am done, now unless there's any other questions, or is there anything else that the Planning Commission could do to answer any questions for the City Council before the public hearing?
I don't see any lights.
Okay.
So that concludes our work session for this evening. We'll recess until 7:30, unless council chooses to start earlier.
We can't.
No, we can't.
We can't.
No, okay. We'll recess until 7:30. Thank you. Yeah.
Patient. What happened to the second work session?
She just told us they.
She just told us they.
I was just gonna say, I mean, it's not going to change the outcome or anything. I mean, they didn't have to shut down.
Well, in case they want to come back out, again, you know, the public and council will know exactly why.
Yeah, I mean.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I would like for all of us to stand. Our city has lost a member, a former vice mayor on City Council, and at this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you, visitors, for coming this evening. As I said, we did have a moment of silence for a, a member and a dear friend of members on council, Vice Mayor, former Vice Mayor Parton, also the Chair, Mr. Cuffey. Ms. Bass, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Here.
Counselor Randolph?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Counselor Gore?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven present, you have a call.
At this time, we'll have a prayer by Reverend Betty Hobbs, followed by the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America led by Counselor Holloway.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this time that we can come together to make decisions on our city and our area. Lord, I just ask that you bless these council people, that they can have the wisdom to do what you want them to do for our city. And Lord, help us as community to back them up and to support them and to do what our part is. Lord, I also ask you to please help with the grieving process, not only of the council people, but also the school board and the community. And we ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to amend or adopt the regular meeting agenda?
A move that we adopt the regular meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Counselor Denton. Discussion? I do not see any lights. Roll call.
Counselor Gore?
She stepped away.
Counselor, Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven motion passes.
Is there a motion to amend or adopt the consent agenda?
A move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Question?
Could you, is there a?
I say second, but if there's nothing on each one of these items, it does, it's not applicable to anything that's in our agenda, correct? Like for presentations, proclamations, I mean, we don't have anything, if there's nothing listed, right? We have a, we have presentations in our agenda, but it's not listed under C nine. If the presentation for the finance report, I don't want to agree to accept that under consent agenda. I want to pull it out as a, maybe, you see what I'm saying?
Mayor Bennett, may I speak?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in, in the previous meeting, we agreed to move that out from under there and put it under information presentations. Excuse me, so it is, it is under information presentations.
I know, but it, it needs to be written here, is what I'm saying, because if we accept it as a consent agenda, we don't have to discuss it, right?
No, it's going to be discussed, that's what those three items are.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, um, give me one second. Point of information, Madam City Attorney. Information presentations are listed within the regular agenda.
Right.
Does that also need to be in place of the resolution in C nine, resolutions, proclamations, and presentations?
No, we, we amended our rules back in February, and one of the changes that were, that were made at the time included moving presentations from the consent agenda in its entirety. So I'm, I'm thinking that this is a typographical error in terms of having the presentations as still a part of the consent agenda. And to the extent that it was. And to the extent that it was contemplated, uh, back in February, the reasons for the resolutions and the proclamations were simply to have council approve the content that would be in, in, in each of those documents and nothing more. So that's where I believe that's where the changes were, but the presentation was moved out of the consent agenda altogether.
Can I make an amm- can I make an amendment to say, to delete the word presentation from this part of the agenda, Madam, uh, Attorney?
Well, if you look at, if you look at the revised rule, and I don't know if you have that available.
I know what the rule says now, what I'm asking is, presentation is printed here. So if someone sees this, it means that you approve a presentation under the consent agenda. So would it be appropriate to move that word from that place?
You, you can, but since there's no presentation that's actually listed as with those other items that are in the consent agenda, it would.
But it's a presentation in the packet. Even though it's not listed, it's a presentation in the packet, which worries me, I don't wanna vote yes to a consent agenda that has a presentation as a pa- in the packet.
Right.
So I prefer this to make an amendment to delete the presentation word.
Just strike, you, just strike the word presentation. I mean, that's obviously at the discretion of council, I, I, it's acceptable. It won't do any harm because the presentation is actually listed in another place on the agenda. But I, I'll defer to council, there's nothing, uh, problematic about that.
Well, I asked for their amendment, if I don't get the second, I, I know their feelings. So I'd like to request an amendment to destroy the word presentation from the consent agenda.
That's fine.
So there's a, there is a motion, I'm on the floor, for an amendment to the consent agenda to remove presentations from C nine. The language.
That's fine.
So, are you seconding her amendment?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, that motion has been made by Counselor Pelham, seconded by Vice Mayor Parton. Discussion, Counselor Gore.
If, you, you, the motion was to take away the word information, but I thought they were all three presenting.
No, no, not information.
Take away the word present.
Only, only as it exists under the consent agenda, not where it is down the agenda.
Okay, no, my takeaway C nine?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense clear.
Present, the language, the language in C nine.
All right, thank you.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Pelham, seconded by Vice Mayor Parton. I don't see any lights. Roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
No.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
No.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have five to two motion passes.
Okay. Is there a motion to, there was a motion to amend the agenda, did we?
Yes, amend the consent agenda.
Moving forward to our presentations. Mr. Terry.
Am I good to go? Am I ready?
Yes, sir. Just if you could speak into the mic.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, uh, City colleagues and staff, citizens and friends of the city. Michael Terry, Finance Director, and today I am, uh, presenting to you a consolidated progress report. It's titled, City of Hopewell, Virginia, Finance Department Financial and Compliance Reporting Progress Report. It's been prepared, uh, for council's information and consideration. First, we'll start, there are seven sections to this, and I'll walk you through, uh, each part, and we will touch on what's, uh, very important to cover in this meeting. So starting in section one, that's the implementation plan progress report. The reporting period that I'm covering is July one, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Under the external reporting, we will cover what we call the closing, reporting, and audit workflow, that's the financial statements. And we will also touch on other. Coming down where you see budget development, we will touch on the budget development for a moment. And internal reporting, uh, we will cover, uh, the items there that's related to transfers by the City Manager. If you would turn the page, uh, two pages over till you get to the, um, sheet that has the closing, reporting, and audit workflow, which we call CRAW, and that has the blue sections there. Starting with fiscal year sixteen, I'm just gonna go back and bring everybody back up where we are. We've completed the annual financial report, the Auditor of Public Accounts Report, and the single audit. The single audit for sixteen was completed and issued to the federal government in January. The second, uh, which is fiscal year twenty seventeen, we've completed the annual financial report, the Auditor of Public Accounts Report, and the single audit. The single audit was completed as of August sixteen, uh, twenty-one. I will go through that a little bit more in detail, that's one of the sections that we have here. So when we get there, if there are questions and additional things, we can cover it there. Uh, we come down to the third section, which is related to fiscal year twenty twenty eighteen, and there's a lot of detailed information there, but if you would turn the page over to the summary, and I'll read that, uh, as it relates to the annual financial report for twenty eighteen. The auditor has forwarded to City Management for review and discussion the following, the auditor's draft opinion.
Uh, Mr. Terry, could you hold on, please, until we get to that page?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go down.
Are we there?
What page are, are, is he on?
They're not numbered. Mr. Terry, if you could, um, can you show that to us, what page you're on?
Here it is.
We're, we're here, and we're at the third, third bullet, the third.
The other way.
It's not, does that seem to be in order, I apologize, it's the way.
Keep going, keep going, pass that report.
Yeah, I don't think you got to report yet.
She's coming to it now.
Yeah, now you have to report.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Close it and pull, keep going. Keep going.
There you are.
Right here.
So, we've gone through that first one, we've gone through the second, you will scroll up, we're at the third, that's twenty eighteen. There's a lot of description there in terms of completion and, and those things, but what I think is more important is the summary that I gave. And if you would continue to scroll, you'll get a, a Word document right there, yeah, yes, ma'am. Okay, so for twenty eighteen, uh, here's the summary from that section there. The auditor has forwarded to City Management for review and discussion, the draft auditor's opinion, the draft internal control and compliance report, and draft findings. The auditor is reviewing and finalizing his review of the city financials. Uh, again, when we get a little bit deeper into this, I will, I will have more detail. As, as to the single.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. You said the auditor?
Yeah, the auditor is, is still reviewing the city financial statements, okay.
How can you do that if something reported is filed? May I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, can I, may I ask a question?
Um, I don't, excuse me, Madam City Attorney, could you please, um, is the rule for presentation to wait until the speaker has spoken? The presenter has spoken? Or should we, do we need to take action to, um, amend those rules?
Well, um, pursuant to Rule two oh three, the counselors do not ask questions during presentations. Um, if council does not want to follow that rule tonight, you would have to suspend that rule. I believe you would suspend it pursuant to Rule four oh seven.
Okay, pursuant to Rule four oh seven, is there a motion to suspend the rule to ask questions during the presentation? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Continue?
Continue, okay. Single audit for twenty eighteen, the auditor has initiated a request to schools for information, uh, that's just to be direct. They've started the process for the single audit for twenty eighteen, even though we're still on the draft of the annual financial report. And if you would scroll back to the prior screen, the very last CRAW blocking is twenty nineteen. Uh, basically, this is where we started working on twenty nineteen. Uh, we have some activity there in the detail, but, uh, it was my professional judgment that that's probably the most best percentage, uh, in terms of where we at overall, when you look at all the things that we have to do. And just a reminder, in case it, it has not come up, the format that we follow in the closing and reporting and audit workflow is a standard process, uh, that we use to be able to get through and be sufficient enough to present, uh, a set of financial statements to the auditor to audit. I'd like to now go to the next section of the report of implementation called Other. And I'm not gonna cover everything, what I'm going to do is to highlight those things that are in this reporting period that I think are important for City Council to know and the public to know about. And as you scroll down, what's in red, we would actually come all the way down to almost the very last one, and it reads the, uh, Crono- Cronono Virus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. What I think is important there is, uh, the finance staff, financial director, myself, uh, the financial budget reporting analyst, the general ledger accountant, uh, participated in receiving and recording funds that were allocated to the city related to what some call the ARPA, or if you will, the, um, State and Local Fiscal Relief Fund. What I'd like to say about that also is that I did not put it here, but I also want to acknowledge the Treasurer's Office, because as we were getting those funds allocated from the feds and indicating where we thought it needed to be posted, we had a great deal of support and assistance in getting it recorded, so I wanna make a note of that. Um, the next item down is that we went through a week of virtual training with the governmental fiscal officer known as GFOA, and there we got a detail of compliance and reporting guidance, uh, US Treasury evidence and evaluation, and an introduction to the American Relief Public Assistance Act for the water bill assistance. Uh, we also went through a very extensive process of qualifying for the US Treasury Portal Security, um, very, very, very rigid, I mean, and very much requirement. Not all members of the Finance Department has gotten that, but we got the bulk of us in order to make our final end of the month reporting. We were required, everyone in the United States that participated or got funds allocated was required to do his first, what they call interim reporting for August thirty-first. And so therefore, we needed the training, and we had to go through the portal certification, and I'm happy and I'm very thankful and pleased to indicate that the City of Hopewell met its compliance on August thirty-first and got the report in, and we've met that. Uh, and there'll be a series of reporting that we have to do quarterly, just depending upon where we are in the cycle of the year, and then final, final, uh, true-up. If you would turn the page, and you would scroll the screen up, there's one other additional page here. What I wanna focus is the one that says rating agency, uh, just so like for council to know that, uh, finance provided fiscal and budgetary information to rating agencies, and that was coordinated by Davenport. Um, and we were able to get all of that done by the end of August. If we would go over to what is called the, um, the next section, what is dealing with FY fifteen, there's no key activity at all for that reporting period, so I'd like to just turn over to the section that's dealing with, uh, the budget development. And specifically, I'm going to only address the budget development for twenty-two, FY twenty-two. So in your books, that would be, uh, two, two pages over. And what's key here, which I think also the citizens and, uh, rating agencies and everyone else listening in on this, is that the, the very bottom there, you'll see that the Finance Department is preparing, um, the draft financial report, or as we like to call it internally, our budget book. Uh, this is the final process that we go through, the budget development cycle, and we are sixty-five percent complete, and our goal, which we will meet, uh, will be to post it on the website, so it'll be available for everyone, um, by September thirtieth or the first week, if you will, in October. If you turn the page and go over to the internal reporting, the most significant item for this period from, um, July one through the end of thirty-first of August is that there were no transfers made by the City Manager during this period. So that concludes the implementation report. Section two, it's just to give a very quick, um, but very important update in terms of the single audit. Uh, the City of Hopewell, single audit was submitted to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse, known as FACS, and that included our data collection information, which they analyze, and all, all, all programs are looked at. On August seventeenth of twenty twenty-one, the city received confirmation that the single audit was accepted. If you turn the page to page one, I'm just gonna do a very high-level walk you through so you would know what was the outcome of the report. Page one is the independent auditor's, um, opinion. And what he has stated here is that, um, the expenditures, what you call the schedules of expenditures and federal awards, sometime those terms is used, used as CIFA, and so whenever you see that, you can match that up with the single audit. On page two, the auditor has at the very top his opinion, as far as the statement goes. His opinion is that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material aspects for the single audit. If you go to page three, there you find where the auditor has his independent audit report on internal controls and compliance. Here you will find that we had one finding, we had no findings in sixteen, so therefore you didn't hear me cover anything. We only had one finding in seventeen, and that I believe you're familiar with, in which the documents, um, that was needed to be, um, audited at schools had gotten destroyed. But if you turn to page nine in the single audit, and those pages are numbered, it shows you the, um, program that it was related to, which was child nutrition, it shows you the criteria, it talks about uh, the need to retain, uh, the applications, it talks about the condition when it occurred, files were purged, it talked about the context of it before the audit was completed. It talked about the calls, meaning that the auditor was not able to, um, sample, to get what he needed to do, to do. Uh, the effect sufficient or appropriate audit evidence was not obtained. And then there's a recommendation to retain all documents until, um, the audits have been done. And management, uh, which includes, uh, the City Manager and the Superintendent for the School Ward, um, is indicated that the City Manager communicated to the Superintendent, the Superintendent has communicated to her staff that we do not discard, destroy any files until, um, we have completed the audit. And when we submitted. And when we submitted the single audit to the feds, they require us to give a work plan. They require us to give a date. They require to give responsible persons and also evidence of completion. So we were very pleased to be able to indicate to them by August 31st that we had completed this finding. Just to make a comment, what we're looking at, we don't have any question calls because we had a very good 2016 single audit. Depending upon how we land for 2018, we may not see anything otherwise, and it is noted that that happened in 2017. As to, if you go back to page, I believe it would be page eight, on page eight, at the, sort of like centered in the middle of the page, it says CFDA number. The one child nutrition cluster that we had the finding on is the one in which we have the auditor was concerned about that and listed that as a disclaimer. But the remainder of the programs, we have what they call an unmodified opinion, and that's basically a good or clean opinion. So we only had one item that we had a disclaimer. And for, if you wanted to make a note in your notebook, that's on page four of the auditor's internal control. At the top it says disclaimer of opinions on child nutrition. And then you come down on the modified opinion of each and other major financial programs. The reason I went to the back schedule at eight, so you could see how that's clustered, how that's, I don't want to use the word clustered, but how that's listed together, so you could actually see all of the programs together. So, other than that, I think, in my opinion, that the city has done well because in there were social services and a lot of other programs, and we passed the compliance test. So I'd like to move on to section three. And section three is simply saying that the draft financial statements, that we provided that to city council on the 24th. And at this moment, the city has not received any changes from the auditor that we need to make to our financial statements, and we have not submitted anything to the auditor. And perhaps at this moment, it might be very good to just stop, to make a pause. If you're not accustomed to, if you're not accustomed to this process, we can actually get to, we can actually get to a point where even next week, that could be a major change or review. So it may sound like, well, how are you doing this, or how is the auditor doing? The process of review goes all the way up until the time of actual issuance. And so that's something I would like everyone to be aware of. So if I just say, you know, we're going over, we're going over, it's not just something we do. It's something that is a part of the professional rollout. So I made this statement in here just to make sure that everyone understands that we have not received anything from them. We're still looking at what we have, and we are on course so far as we're going forward. And I had asked that, I didn't put that draft in here because I had already issued it to you. So just want to make sure everybody know that that's what I was talking about, the one from the last meeting. Okay, section four. This is now dealing with the 2018 draft financial report. And this is the auditor's draft opinion. And I read, "The auditor has proposed to issue a disclaimer opinion due to they have not been able to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence to provide a basis for an opinion." And I put there, "See auditor's responsibility and disclaimer option section," we'll get there. The second bullet says, "The auditor's quote basis for disclaimer of opinion is summarized in the paragraph under the heading, 'Basis for disclaimer of opinions on the governmental activities, the business type activities, and the aggregate discreetly presented component unit schools and each major funds in aggregate remaining fund information.'" If you would turn the page, I will walk you through and sort of get right to the language that I think is important for council to be informed on and to consider. When you come under auditor's responsibility, that very last, well, it's not a full sentence, that very last sentence says disclaimer of opinion, "We were not able to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence to provide a basis or an audit opinion." And they come down with explaining to you what a basis for a disclaimer of opinion, and those are the, those are the statements or the funds within the statements. The key here is they were, that there were material differences between the treasurer's office, the city, and the school board as it relates to adjusted general ledger and financial statements as it relates to bank reconciliation. I'm not going to dwell on this at this moment, but I think it's just important to understand that the reconciliation resides and rests with the treasurer, but there are other components that has to be a part of that. The city, meaning i.e. the overall city, city departments, and the schools. And so what the auditor is saying here is that there were some items that had material differences, not minor. And then also, there was not any sufficient evidence, meaning there was explanation by each unit. Think of it like a family. One family says, yeah, I've done this, I've done that. Another family says, I've done this, I've done that. And the third one says, I've done this, done that. But at the end of it all, it has to be uniform and balanced out. So the evidence of what was done and what was to counterbalance the other in most of the cases was not produced sufficiently enough that the auditor could render opinion. Coming on down to the other items that are listed in this paragraph, we have the Hopewell Regional Waste, Water, and Treatment Facilities. They were not able to obtain the evidence that they need relating to the accounts receivables, refund credits, and charges. And as far as what we call the city businesses or the enterprise component, sewer services, solid waste, stormwater. It's a good way of just summarizing up. But the accounts receivable and again, charge for services, there was not sufficient enough evidence for that. And again, we use a third-party billing. And at the time that that was brought in-house, the specs weren't done properly, and the coordination and the communication wasn't done properly to say, this is what we need for an audit. And so therefore, it's just difficult to get that information. You really have to put some resources in there to pull it out. And remember, this is 2018, so it was, it was just not enough evidence there. If you would turn the page to, yeah, this came from the auditor, so his page is not numbered because it's a draft. But if you just turn the page, at the very top, there is the disclaimer of opinion. And again, it says obtained, I'm going in the middle of the paragraph. It says, "Obtained sufficient appropriate audit evidence to provide a basis for an audit opinion." Because of this significant matter, they were not able to render an opinion. Come down, because there are times in which individuals wonder whether or not a restatement is the cause for the disclaimer, and they do a very professional job at indicating in that paragraph that there were corrections errors from prior year balances, meaning things that were, you caught up with them and saw there was something in prior year that still needed to be adjusted. But that was not the basis for them rendering a disclaimer. It really was related to what I just covered. So if you would go over to page, to section five. So let me just slow down and summarize what we've just covered. We've gone through the auditor's draft opinion, and we've gone through the internal control, we're now approaching the internal control and compliance auditor's opinion. Summary statement. "The draft 2018 report of independent auditor internal control over financial compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards." And I state, "The auditor identified and described certain deficiencies in internal control that they considered to be material weaknesses, i.e. a deficiency or combinations of deficiencies in internal control such that a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the city financial statement will not be prevented," that is key, "will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis." And that's finding 201801, and we will get there in a moment. Also, the auditor in communications with the city management indicated in his draft that there were no significant deficiencies, i.e. a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in the internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance, and that would be you, the council members. So in this draft, what they're saying, that if anything had come up to them that it was severe enough, it wasn't a material weakness, but they thought you needed to know as governance, they would have made that statement clear to you. The second bullet says, "The auditor identified and described instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the government auditing standards." So what you have in this report, we're getting ready to flip over to, is two major things. Looking at the internal controls and looking at how you are complying with the covenants, the laws and the regulations that you are required as a city or locality to follow. So in the draft letter that you have that has draft for discussions, in the middle there is simply what I just went through on the front, giving the definitions and giving clarity on where we stand at between a deficiency versus a material weaknesses versus a significant deficiency. So I won't go through that. We come over to the compliance, and I just went through that in summary, which simply says, this is where they're talking about laws, regulations, contracts. Are we in agreement with those things that we have signed up for? And all of that is under finding 2018001. So if you turn to section six, scroll to section six, thank you, ma'am. What I wanted to do at this point, there are several ways an auditor can present the findings. Many of us are used to going from left to right, where you see the finding, the cause, the criteria. All you saw in the single audit where it was coming downward. I will have to say that I thought this was very, Robertson, Farmer, Cox was very good at not giving, like, multiple, multiple findings, but when you just all sum them up, they would mean the same thing. So what I wanted you to know, that maybe in the past, we've received reports, and we had four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and then we had to try to crosswalk them and get them all done. This auditor chose to just get to the heart of the matter. They know where we are, we're trying to catch up in our compliance reporting. You know, we need to know what we need to do and where we need to show up at house to get stuff done. So we have only one finding, and I read for the draft 2018. "The auditor selected to identify and describe one central finding that is applicable to both city, to both city and schools. And if by now, for the sake of the public, we can never issue until the schools have had their books audited because their numbers roll into our numbers. So it's extremely important for me as a finance director to be compassionate and understand what's going on at schools and to give them as much help as we can when they need to have it." So that's something that I think a lot of people don't realize is that we definitely are dependent because they're in our financial statements. So this finding is across the board or integrated in both the component unit and the city as a whole. And then the second bullet says, "The financial statements finding section one format flows with the city first, school board second. And under the finding, there's criteria, the condition and context, cause and effect. And then lastly, they ended up with a summary statement and a recommendation that is applicable both to the city and to the school board." If you go over to now section seven.
Section seven.
Thank you. So section seven concludes this consolidated report, progress report. And I will read to you the following. "The 2018 annual financial report draft as provided to city council on August 24th remains unchanged. Specifically, there has been no changes by either city management or the auditor as of August 31st, 2021. The auditor has forwarded to the city management for review and discussion the following, their draft audit opinion, their draft internal control and compliance report, and draft findings. City management, comment and recommendation." Comment, and I read. "Internal discussion by city management and school board management regarding the forward-mentioned documents forwarded by the auditor has been conducted and is currently ongoing. The key matter that is under consideration is whether to accept the auditor's draft as presented or to, or recommit both city staff and school staff to perform or produce additional evidence that would result in a different outcome currently described and presented by the auditor. The recommit will require 100% dedication, 100% dedication, additional staffing resources, and the realization that the anticipated alternate information to be provided to the auditor may still not satisfy his original stated concern of receiving sufficient evidence to render an opinion and/or to alter his, and/or to alter the finding." Recommendation, and I read. "Context is the major viewpoint management is faced with. The options are to continue to pursue and apply resources to obtain a more favorable June 30th, 2018 report." That is the annual financial report. Again, we have to submit the APA report and the single audit. Rather than firmly noting the lesson learned of the city and school's strength and weakness, that is financial reporting, internal control, and compliance, flowing from 2014 up to 2018, and is expected to be found in fiscal year 2019, 2020, and 21 to present. Or, and I read, "To understand where we are and the resolve to undertake a comprehensive plan of action and resources to implement the auditor's recommendation, continue to focus on the financial statement preparations for 2019, 2020, and 2021." And here, "While being mindful of the required work to be performed to ensure sufficient evidence is available to demonstrate to the auditor that the city's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects." And the last bullet is implementation of improvements. "City management recommend the second option and request city council concurrence and support of such." That concludes my consolidated financial compliance and progress report to city council.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor for questions or comments from city council, but I do have a question for you, Mr. Terry, because I just wanted to understand what was going on. Excuse me, before I do that, Councilor Pelham has a question.
Well, throughout this report, it seemed like the auditor said in so many different Well, throughout this report, it seemed like the auditor said in so many different ways, they don't have an opinion. Every paragraph or every other paragraph is, we either don't have an opinion or the internal controls are. I don't understand. I always spend so much money just to get, there are no controls, there's no opinion. It took us three years to get to that point, and it's disappointing to me. I have a question, just a statement. I have too many questions to even ask, I think it's horrible. And definitely need to be some changes made, that's for sure. That's all I have to say right now.
Would you like to answer that question or, Ms. Councilor Pelham, did you have a question?
No, it's just that I, they don't have it, they couldn't gather enough information to make real an opinion to me.
I do have, I do have a question for you, Mr. Terry. If we go to section one, and, I mean, section six, right? And we go to section one of the financial statement findings, it's the last page in section six. There's a recommendation from the auditor, but prior to them saying that, there were findings on unauthorized and unfunded capital expenditures. Material violation of laws and regulations were incurred. The circumvention of the city's role in funding capital acquisition with local funds and a significant deficit in the building and school board management replacement fund. The budgetary process, the operating budget exceeded actual expenditures by approximately $2 million, which resulted in the city's budgeting to local share requirements higher than needed before, therefore created a burden on the city's taxpayers. Okay? The summary is, "The city's inability to produce timely audited financial statements may impact the city's ability to acquire financing for long-term city and school board capital projects." I'm sorry, I'm reading through this big black discussion. Eligibility for applying for other economic resources such as grants, hire qualified personnel, and economic development. Their recommendation, it is recommended the city and school board perform the entity-wide internal control risk assessment to develop and implement a corrective action plan to address the internal control deficiencies noted above. The risk assessment should be considered in the systemic environment, internal control structure, financial processes, personnel and organizational structure. These are the findings in section one. My question to you is, what have we been working toward? These recommendations, even though this is 2018 findings, are they the same? Do, are we still having the same issues with the, with gathering information for 2019?
Yes, when, when I was going through the report, when I was, wanted to make sure when the question came up, because I expected it to come up, is that we're in a time zone lapse, where we're catching up with reports, but we have not, as a city or schools, changed any procedures because we're working where we are to come up. On the city side, what I want to explain is that when we were looking back at, where I wrote that these items were flooring from 2014, and in the, embedded in the findings that the auditor put there, they indicated in several items that these items were there as of 2015. So we're talking about fiscal year 2014, 15. So what that's saying is that when, just to put it bluntly, when the city decided to go to automated enterprise system known as Munis, the prior administration and management, everything that they had done over 10, 15, 20 years was well documented. They knew what to do, a lot of things were centralized. But for whatever reason, there was an understanding that because you put in a new computer system, that things were going to just chug along and take care of themselves. There was a lot of decentralization of functions, and that is important. A lot of things were handled within financing, that's the finding that's in this report back in 2014, 15, but it was decentralized, meaning that it was expected that a department would now be responsible for reconciling certain subsidiary ledgers like, well, renewal, things of that nature. On the other hand, when you go to schools, it's no secret to anyone that their accounting system does not perform and cannot produce what's needed. And we had gone through this at the last meeting, it took seriously, from the date of June 30th, 2018, let's put it that way, two years and possibly X amount of months to get a handle on closing. They had to actually go through and do a 100% restructuring of transactions for that full year.
Who's "we"?
Schools.
Just the schools?
Yeah, schools. Okay, so what you have, and the question you're asking me, is you have an accounting system was brought up in Munis, decentralized, not everybody knew what they were doing. You had a very well-intentioned group, because I think Munis is good to do, and they did do a good job. But none of those original players are here today. And what that's telling you is that the implementation actually failed, and what do I mean by that? It means that you normally backfill with what we call temps, that they continue the good process that the older system was doing and all of the things that worked really well, and you document that very well. And then the persons who are going to implement the new system, they make sure that what I was getting out of the old system, everything being reconciled, finding I had cash, finding the general ledger is done.
Mr. Terry, can you give me one second? I just want to ask you a question in there. You said you had temps that came in to make sure that information was going into the system.
No, let me correct.
Okay.
I'm giving you, let me.
I'm sorry, I just was trying to understand.
What I'm trying to give you so that the question you asked me makes sense, because if you don't, then I've not done my job in educating you all.
Got it, okay.
So what I was saying is, this is, this is the model that is very evident that whole well did not follow, and here's the model with a new system implementation. You take your old system, and everything that you like and you're doing and is running well, and you're able to issue financial statements timely, and you have no findings, and it's wonderful. You bring in temporary resources, they're called backfield. It could be Robert Half people, it could be IT people, and you teach them how to do the old way. Why the primary persons that are going to be responsible for the new system is learning how to use that new system. Test that system for a year, and it's sometimes very wise to run it parallel for two years. Meaning, can I produce a set of financial statements with the audit evidence under this new system just as well as I can under the old? Then what you do is, if it's a good implementation, then what you do at that point is you either promote some of those backfield or temporary people based on documenting, you know, how well the system is running, the new system. And the people that were really working on it fronthand, they move up in management. So what you start having is a very strong internal control, compliance system, because the finance department will know to ask schools to return money back to the city and to work that out at the end of the year, you know, we go through that with budget. You would have death in the organization so that you don't have what you have now. We don't have hardly anyone that was in a primary role now still here from the original implementation. And when we look at it, and the way Robertson, Farmer, and Cox came to me about it, is they looked very carefully at the preliminary report that I did for council when I got here, because I was able to determine right up front that we got great folks to run day-to-day operations. But to, to do this and to bring the controls up to speed, we were, we were not there.
So, Mr. Terry, my other question to you, well, it sounds like to me, we had a transition of new individuals, right? New employees come in or new temps come in to take over, and we're trying to, you know, train them so that they would know the process. My question to you, does the finance department have any policies, guidance, or procedures? If, just in case, everyone in the finance department just goes away. If a new person comes in and they're qualified to do this job, what do they look at in order to complete the mission that the city has set forth for them? Is there policies, guidelines, and procedures right now within the, within the finance department?
We have policies and procedures, but they're not updated to match.
So when was the last update? Because I want to, I'm not asking you anything, I want to come back with you, we'll talk about this more, because I'm gonna move on. But I feel as if council, it keeps, it states many times within these findings that it's internal control. So my, my idea or what I'm feeling here is, what are the policies, procedures, and guidance that we have set forth in, right now? So that way, if finance department, they don't, they just disappear, just poof, and we need it to get done, do we have a structure that someone can follow? But this is, I'm gonna leave, because I know we can't answer all those questions tonight, it'll probably have to be a work session. But I really want you to, you know, understand, that's my question. If we're continuing to find these findings and they're not updated, maybe we need to talk about how we can implement these guidelines, or how do we do this? And I'm gonna pass that on to Councilor Gore.
If you will, if you will, just to make a note, and I understand your question, we'll get back to it when we have a work session. But that is exactly what, in section seven.
Uh-huh, I did see that.
Those bullets there, each one of them addresses your question, and I passionately understand your question. So.
Well, I mean, it doesn't address my question, the fact that I don't, we don't have any policies, procedures, or guidance in place. That does not answer my question. So I do want to come back, if we can discuss this. If so happened, you know, we can decide on a finance department tonight with me and Councilor Randolph is on, we can just move forward with that, you know? So this is something, we'll table it for now, but I just want you to know my concern, okay? Councilor Gore.
Thank you. I have a few quick questions, but I do want to say, to support the mayor, the finance policies that are filed go back to like the 1970s, because there was a presentation about that, so I asked Mr. Altman to give the mayor those policies, I know that they're scanned, because when Patrice was here, we got all of the policies scanned, and that was a reference to make the draft finance policy that we presented to council two years ago in October, to address all the audit findings. And so, I know that they're scanned, she can get a copy of them for a reference. I actually sent it to all of council again, so she can see just how outdated they are. But the work session, just to be clear, I know you said the auditors are coming in September. So is that a separate work session, or is that going to be a work session before a meeting? Because if that's the case, we will not get to what we need to get to, it needs to be a separate standalone work session.
So the auditors are scheduled to come and present the audit findings on the 28th. From there, I think you then have the work session to talk about the findings, but that is, you wouldn't have the work session prior to them getting here, you would have that after they come and present.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll come back to that. Mr. Terry, when you said there was no transfers, are you talking about transfers from between funds? What do you mean by transfers?
You're going back to the.
You said there were no transfers, transfers between funds, or unassigned to the budget? Was any money moved from unassigned to the budget appropriations, okay? And then not between funds either, right? Okay, so I want to make sure, I got a question about that earlier. When you said that you talked to the rating company, because we haven't had our ratings, so what is this? Was this an effort to see we can get our bond ratings back from the two agencies?
No, they were doing an annual review of localities that's in here, and we were included in it.
Okay, so we're still, they're still, we're not.
Yeah, we still, we still don't have ratings, but that doesn't preclude any questions.
All right, so this is city manager, when do you anticipate us getting the cost of the audit to date? We did ask for that the last time Mr. Terry was here, and we said for all of the expenditures to include contractors, other groups that came in to help, when are we gonna get that data?
So I know Mr. Terry's working on that information now, and I would anticipate that we would have it to you before or after meeting on the 28th.
So, it's, it's been about a month to give us that data, we've been asking for this for a while. Why does it take so long to get that, we've been asking how much it's been costing to do the audits?
Do you want to take action on it?
Yeah, I mean, you know what, I'll make a note so we can make a vote, but give me one second. So, do you know why it's still taking so long?
Well, I know we're focusing effort on getting this completed, and that's taken the priority as opposed to working on that. But we're working on it and we'll have it for you as soon as possible. But the effort has been on finishing and closing out 18 and getting this done, so we can get it behind us.
All right, so I'm gonna make a note for that. So, let me be clear on what I think that I heard you say, when you said the whole comment about there not being enough in order to render an opinion, was that for the whole audit or just those accounts that you mentioned? That was unclear to me.
I think what the auditor opinion is saying to you is that collectively, all things added together that really deals with cash and cash positions, and anything that has an influence on cash, accounts receivables, and those kind of things, they could not get enough comfort level to be able to issue an opinion.
But cash is one part, because I thought earlier, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, because I have been asking about data integrators, that third-party contract, and I, when you were talking, I went back into my email since 2018. You know, I've been painfully asking about that. And I remember, at the last meeting, it was said, well, that was the reason why some of the enterprise accounts were having issues, but that wasn't related before, it was an issue about uncollected bills. So, if that's a separate issue than the cash, wouldn't it be more than just cash being the problem for them not getting the documents?
I apologize, ma'am, I, I was up here, I mean, Mrs. Gore, Councilor Gore, I was up here. I just assumed you understood that the revenue collected, I mean, the accounts receivable when they're collected rolls up to cash. But they did list that the accounts receivable in those areas are also, they are concerned for disclaimer.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I'm asking, I did follow you, because, but when people hear cash, now it's been associated with the treasurer's office, they might just think it's that one office, when truly, it's not just that office, and that's why I want to provide clarity. It's also still how the other funds have been managed.
No, it, it, when you look at the financial statements, you have to look at it in its totality, in its whole. And so, basically, it's just not one fund, it's just not one particular area. It's a collectiveness of it. I thought you were going to ask the other question, which I did pose to the auditor. Other than, and it's not that it's not serious, but other than that, how about the other things that are on the balance sheet? How are we doing with fixed assets? How are we doing with bonds, pensions, and all those kind of things? You don't see any comments there or any concern, which is telling you that overall, we're fine. But what is most critical is those items that a user of the financial statement, we want to make a decision on, and that are, those things are related to cash, those things that are equivalent to that, so.
So just to clarify, and that's, just, just correct me if I'm wrong. I remember asking two times, but most specifically, the last time we had a conversation, if those particular enterprise funds, the four that you know haunt me, Stone Water, Waste Water, Beacon, and Solid Waste, right? I asked if they were able to produce documents for the audit, and I am positive the answer was yes.
I don't, if that was the answer, then.
That was the answer.
I don't recall, I don't recall that, and what I would say, if that was the answer, it was wrong. That's why, that's why I like this auditor, because they're able to come in and look at what we do have. And so, it's two, it's two levels here. I'm making that statement based on you asking a specific question at this point in time. We've gone through, one, two, two auditors, Jerry Becker, P B Mayers. The documentation that they got, you know, it was, if that answer was done at that point in time, but they didn't render an opinion either, because there was a whole bunch of other things related to that. So rather than continually saying, you said this at this time, or this was out here this time, I would just simply say, what we're doing right now in 2021 is we're looking at, and we're asking. is we're looking at, and we're asking the auditor, what is it that you specifically would need to have? Rather than us going fishing, and we come back with the fish, and then you tell us that it's okay, but it's not what I need for evidence. So we're working on it now. So that's why, I apologize, but I know out of sequence, out of cycle, whatever year you're talking about, that answer may have been correct, but ver- rather than deal with that, I just accept that, that was, it's an error.
All right, I have la- two more last questions. I wrote them down. So when you say the whole comment about the view, can you just be a little bit more clearer? Because it seems like you're waiting for us to give guidance on which path to take? Uh, 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 I, I'm not sure if that's what it is, that I want it to be implied that it is, and we were supposed to give guidance. So if that is what you're looking for, can you explain a little bit more when you say the two views? Because it seems like there's a path A or a path B.
Yeah. We have right as management, you're of governance, but we have right as management to say to the auditors, we don't accept your opinion. We don't accept what you've placed before us. But when we say that, we should have the evidence to back that up. At this point, in order to, with the items that they have itemized, we would have to, as a city and as a school, we would have to expend a significant amount of effort. Let me give you an example of what I mean. There would have to be a one hundred percent review and reconciliation of cash transactions. And that would, that would be, that would be similar to what schools had to do, but that would be out of the treasury's operation. Can't do it alone because scattered, turn to city and to schools. So at this point, if the goal is to try to change the audit opinion for a year that has closed over two years ago and some months, and understanding that you have been going on a pathway, so you probably will find the same findings and the same, you know, we didn't tweak anything. We just continued to, to work through the day-to-day operations and get, um, the reports out that we have. So you're going to fall farther and farther behind. So what is there is, if it's desire of management, and it's not the desire of management, that's the recommendation, is that we close this off, be done with it. I haven't seen anything that's not factual. I have not seen anything that's, when I'm discussing it with my other colleagues, uh, and including schools, because we've sat down and met with them and gone through. But at this point, what we want to do is the same work, and I think this hopefully will help you as counsel, the same level of detailed work that has to be done at schools for this eighteen has to be done for nineteen. They have to recreate one hundred percent their accounting system GL and produce a set of financials. The difference this time is that they have a learning curve and they have lesson learned. On the city side and the treasury side, we have learned some things, so it should not be as long. But it's going to take some time to get nineteen done. So if we look back and try to do any more investment in eighteen, you have to wait that we're now moving close to the second half of fiscal year twenty-two. So you really would want to have a game plan on how you're going to come up to close the gap, bring in the resources to close the gap, get all of the audits up to date, so that by, uh, a certain period of time, you would be in, in, in the zone of issuing, uh, a good opinion for fiscal year probably twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so my last question was, um, I said I had to use this as the last one. I'll ask the clerk to put on the agenda my request that I had from before to ask to separate out the finance department and the auditing team, and to have recommendations on how to do that, because there needs to be clear separation of resources. So, Mr. Terry, um, I don't know if it got to you, but if you have some recommendations that you can include, um, for our discussion, then please pass them on. Then I think I heard you correctly when you said, uh, you guys have been making the changes, right?
Say that again, ma'am.
I thought you said to Counselor Pelham that you have, that both the schools and the cities have not been making some of the changes for the audit, you've just been pushing ahead, right?
But we have been making changes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, because we voted to make that be a directive to make changes. Okay, so the last thing, I, I will say, thank you for presenting. This is what we've been looking for, I personally have been looking for, so I appreciate it. Um, but I will say, in twenty nineteen, council voted to move forward with, uh, getting a quote on a risk assessment and a compliance audit. When we had PB Mayor's come and present, that motion did pass, but we have yet to get that data. So I like to make a motion to have a quote to move forward with a risk assessment and compliance audit, and then to also have the data in regards to the cost of producing the audits to date by next Friday.
I'm going, second, did you?
Yes.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gore, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there any light for discussion?
Can I hear the motion again, please?
Please restate your motion.
Not showing me flame, because we have issues with motions, I'm going to ask the clerk to restate what she has. I'll tell her if she's correct.
Madam, madam clerk.
Yeah, she's going to have to help me with that, because I didn't get all of it.
It's okay, just let me know what you got.
It's motion to have quote to move forward with risk assessment, and you have to finish for me.
And compliance audit that was approved, and I believe the year was twenty nineteen, and for the, the costs incurred thus far with completing the audits to date. And to be extra clear, I'm talking about any contract, any third-party support, any other agreement that put into that, okay?
We're, none of us are getting that.
I'm sorry, what?
You're going to have to slow down in what you're saying, because we can't.
That's cool, I can do that.
Yeah.
Can you restate?
What do you have, Ms. Bass?
Motion to have quote to move forward with risk assessment and compliance audit that was approved for twenty nineteen.
In, in twenty nineteen.
In twenty nineteen, and for the cost thus far.
Completing.
Incurred.
Uh, the cost thus far incurred.
Incurred?
Mm-hmm. With completing the audits. And if you want to be specific, you can start back at twenty sixteen to current. And this is, you don't have to have any motion, but for, on the record, I'm asking for any amount of money, contract, third-party, MOU, I don't care.
But that's not to be part of the motion, right?
Say, I don't care.
I mean, what I'm saying is.
Please be clear in your motion.
MOU, MOA, co- any contract agreement, any third-party vendor, any external staff, any cost incurred to generate, and, the audit. So to be clear, if that means that someone was hired to gather paperwork, if someone's required to crunch numbers, that's what I want. We've been asking for that.
For fiscal year sixteen on forward?
Yes, because, or, yeah, because, um, I tried to do sixteen, because I know Mr. Terry said they had, they had to redo sixteen. So I'm trying to avoid where I think he, you, you redid sixteen or fifteen?
I can give you sixteen, that's where.
Okay, that's where he started, yeah.
Fiscal year sixteen forward.
Sixteen, that's when he started.
Sixteen forward.
Mm-hmm. He can't speak to the stuff before, and I think part of sixteen may not even be with him.
And the only thing from fifteen that came into this cycle that you're talking about was the single audit.
Right.
But I discussed with that auditor that based on, I had to work with him to get that out, that they did not bill us for that additional work.
Yeah.
Was that clear?
Yeah, so it's information gathering and reporting back.
By Friday.
It's still not clear.
By this Friday.
I thought she said next Friday.
What's the deadline?
I said next Friday.
Next Friday.
Can you please state that date?
Hold on. I'll pull up the calendar.
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. We'll have it before the meeting.
September twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Yep.
I am going to ask you to restate that motion. I'm sorry, clearly, for all of council to hear. Okay, Lima Charlie.
Okay. I'm writing fast. Uh, motion to have quote to move forward with risk assessment and compliance audit that was approved in twenty nineteen, and for the cost incurred thus far to complete audits twenty sixteen to current. Any cost incurred to generate audit? External staff, MOU, MOA, third-party vendor contracts for FY sixteen forward by next Friday, September twenty-fourth.
Okay, Mr. Altman had a question.
Well, I just want to clarify with Ms. Gore. She keeps saying a motion to quote, you're asking for a quote, right? A, a quote of cost for the risk assessment.
Yes, when PB Mayor's presented to us, um, I think at the time Counselor Pelham had on the motion forensic audit, but then in the discussion, we came to the conclusion that a compliance audit was best for what we were looking for in a risk assessment. And there was an ask to go back to give us that information for the quote.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just clarifying on the motion. It should really say a quote, not motion quote.
Oh, no, a, like, a quote to execute.
Motion to have a quote, understood.
To provide those.
Yeah.
Yeah, so whatever the quote process is that you need to do to bring us back three or whatever, then that's what I'm talking about.
So I'll insert the word "a" before quote.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, that motion's been made by Counselor, uh, Gore, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Counselor Pelham, did you have a question? Or, and then it's Counselor Denton.
I do.
Counselor Denton, okay.
Can you go back to two thousand and fifteen?
As far as costs?
Well, it, for cost and compliance audit, everything.
Yes, ma'am, I can, we can take a look at that.
Okay, I thought I was trying to keep it when you were here, but, okay, well, that's fine.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Two thousand fifteen?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
I, I need to pause, excuse me. I'm going to pause and ask the point of information to the city attorney. This is for problematic procedures prior to me moving on. Um, madam city attorney, there was a friendly amendment done, and it was accepted by the counselor who made the initial motion.
And I agree too.
Did the.
I said I agree.
And then the, it was the second Counselor Pelham stood second, said she agreed to the friendly amendment. Do we vote again? Okay. Thank you, okay?
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you mentioned the vote that council took in two thousand and nineteen. I believe that, that motion was for a forensic audit, and that was passed with no cost. So have we, are you saying we have voted on a compliance audit since then?
We asked for, if my memory is correct, and let me be, quote, if my memory is correct, I believe we said for the staff to go back and to get us data on a compliance audit and a risk assessment due to the presentation that was received, and for the gentleman to come back to us and present regarding those things. And so much that, um, what is Mr. Harris's group, the Community Ward, uh, Network? They sent emails out to council asking when were we going to go back and revisit that information, because they were watching the meeting and wanted to know. So there is a document, uh, there is a paper trail regarding this, but, uh, I don't know if I should be as specific. Um, I said to my memory, but you know what? Counselor Pelham, you want to strike that out, the motion, just in case there's no hangups? Because there seems to be some hangups with that.
Make a motion to do a compliance.
Yeah, just bring us back quotes, you can.
Do you accept that friendly amendment to strike out the, the.
Whatever related to fiscal year.
Yeah, take away the twenty nineteenth, I don't want there to be any issues.
Madam city clerk, did you hear that?
So remove the twenty nineteen from the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Are you done with your question?
Not really. I'd like a point of information from the city attorney.
Madam city attorney?
If, if we voted in two thousand and nineteen, and it was passed, I believe four to three, for a forensic audit. If we're getting cost, does it have, we haven't talked about passing a compliance.
That for this motion, you say the question.
That was brought in, that was introduced when we had a presentation on Zoom. But we did not act on that, to my knowledge, we did not vote on that.
In, in terms of a point of information, all I can recall is that.
Miss.
Can you hear me now?
Better, yeah.
So in terms of a point of information, all I recall was that there was a majority vote to do forensic audits. I don't have any recollection about risk assessments or anything to that nature. I do recall at some point in time after the vote to do the forensic audits, that there was a request for staff to come back with some pricing information, but I can't be more precise than that. That's all I have in terms of information.
Well, we just corrected that, we just took that out the motion and just, we're voting for a compliant audit now, and a risk of seven. It doesn't matter about it. That's taken out of the motion. So it's for compliant audit and a risk assessment.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. I, uh, there is a motion on the floor. Counselor Randolph.
Thank you. We did vote on the forensic, we did talk to an auditor, because the issue of a forensic audit was something that we were talking about being way too expensive. Nobody wanted to hear that until we talked to a compliance, uh, gentleman and his corporation. He did suggest we needed a compliance audit, and we all agreed to that. We did not vote on it that I remember, but we did ask the staff to come back to us on something. My question that has not been addressed in this particular motion is we're asking for a quote of a risk assessment and compliance audit. Is that going to be for specific departments, Counselor Gore? Or is that going to be across the board for the entire city? Because that's going to make a difference on where we're having and what cost that compliance audit is going to be. I cannot vote for something that's going to, um, look at the entire city, but yet we have issues with many different aspects in the city, including schools. And I don't know that I can still vote for it, even if we are, uh, coming down to a handful of departments, because we have also talked about some of the solutions. I look at the twenty eighteen findings that were listed that Mayor Bennett talked about with the city finance director. Some of these we've already talked about as a council, about, uh, wastewater and, um, the refunds and the accounts receivable, and how we, I thought, had enacted a plan to bring that in internally and to get that solved. We've also talked about several others, but there are many findings on this that we haven't talked about at all. And before we do an audit or approve an audit, I would like for us to have more information on all these findings that we've never even discussed. That's just my opinion, and so I don't know if there's an answer to the audit piece of it, of what type of bricks, risk assessments and compliance audits we're looking to do. But I think it would be beneficial to whoever's getting the quote to be consolidating that information and, and let. But I think it would be beneficial to whoever's getting the quote to be consolidating that information and, and let them know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So to be clear, my answer is for the entire city. Um, when we get those quotes back, if we decide to move forward, then we could potentially negotiate which departments to do first. So to be clear, I'm talking about the entire city. Uh, obviously, any department or group that receives and distributes money. So, uh, based off of the quote and the bandwidth, we can prioritize which departments to do first, but that shouldn't negate us from getting the answer.
Okay. Right. I'm going to, um, I don't have any other questions. Um, thank you, Mr. Terry, for being here, and you did clearly provide information that we requested, so thank you very much for your time. Um, I am for this vote because in the RFC we can talk about this, and we've talked about it in two thousand and nineteen. We've talked about it in two thousand and twenty. We talked about it. Now we're here in two thousand and twenty-one. We can't continue to flick it down or kick the can down the road. In the RFC, independent auditors report on compliance for each major program. There's a deficiency in our internal control over compliance. And it exists, right? Um, it also states that material weakness in internal control of compliance yet important enough, important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. We as a body of council, we're charged with that governance. That makes us accountable. So therefore, per this recommendation that we see in front of us, is the first time I'm seeing this one, I am for this vote. Counselor Pelham?
Yes, and as well, if we did have to specify certain departments or whatever, I, I would just like to read the part of the rep, the report that talks about the areas. There were material differences between bank reconciliations and the city and component unit school boards adjusted general ledger and financial statements. The city treasurer's office, component unit school board were unable to provide sufficient appropriate audit evidence for these material discrepancies in cash transactions. The city and staff of the Hopewell Regional Wastewater Treatment Facilities were not able to provide sufficient appropriate audit evidence for multiple elements of that area of HRWTF. Financial statements, including accounts receivable, refund credits payable, and changes, charges for services. The city was not able to provide sufficient appropriate audit evidence for multiple el, elements for the sewer service, solid waste, and stormwater funds, including accounts receivable and charges for services. So if we have to start somewhere, those areas definitely need to be the start places. Um, regional wastewater, the city and its financial statements, the treasurer's office, and the school board. So if we, I don't want to change the motion right now, but like Counselor Gore said, we can come back and negotiate. But it is just crazy to keep going forward without policies and knowing where we are to change the, uh, uh, audit ability in the future audits for nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and soon to be twenty-two. So if you want to start, let's start there. When the time comes, we can negotiate it. Thank you.
Mr. Terry, did you want to answer, was that a question or?
No, I don't know.
It was just a statement, Mr. Terry.
Of course.
It was just a statement.
If you can't comment, if you want to.
Madam City Attorney, are we able to allow comments from outside when there's a motion on the floor if there was no question to the, to the, um, individual?
Yeah, this is discussion of the motion by the members.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Terry, by body members. And the second reason why I'm, um, with this vote is because also unauthorized unfunded capital expenditures, material violation of laws and regulations federally, right? So that also seems to me, we continue to get these. And that to me, if we're in violation of how our funds are unlawful and unfunded capital expenditures, does that mean that we are receiving money from appropriated funds? My question is going to become, but I'm going to ask this in the, the compliance audit. If we're using those funds that are appropriated to us from federal level, state, and using our city expenditure money, I mean, our city revenue money, are they in compliance with how we are spending it? That is what I'm looking for, because if we're not, there is a, we are the governing body. We will be held accountable for malfeasance. Whether we continue to see this and we continue to flick it down the road or we're going to sit here and say, hey, look, let's make a decision. Let's move forward and figure out what's going on so we can fix our internal controls, fix our policies and guidances. I'm for this vote. Anyone else have a comment?
Just for the record, Mr. Terry wasn't a finance director during this time. He just happens to be the person here now.
We're not doing anything.
With that, I'll call for the vote, please.
Counselor Parton wants you to read the motion one more time.
Just for everybody.
Okay. Motion to have a quote to move forward with risk assessment and compliance audit. And for city council to receive the cost incurred thus far with com, with compliance audits, two thousand and sixteen to current. Any cost incurred to general audit, external staff, MOU, MOA, contracts, third-party vendors for FY fifteen forward by Friday, September twenty-fourth.
Fifteen. Did you say fifteen or sixteen?
Yeah, start with fifteen.
I thought I said fifteen.
You didn't.
Fifteen.
Okay, so I will correct that. I, I wrote fifteen. I apologize.
Add fifteen.
Got it.
Mr. City Manager, did you have a question on the motion?
Not on the motion. Y'all take your vote, but we do, we do need that section seven, that last piece where we have the two items. Option A, one and two, we do need guidance on, we, we recommended the second option, the second option of cutting off eighteen and moving. We do need some action on that, so take your vote.
So, did you need action tonight? Because this is a presentation. So we're going to go ahead and move forward with this, um, with the motion that's on the floor. That's what we're talking to, right? No other hands? Roll call.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have six to one. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Altman, you wanted to state something.
So in Mr. Terry's presentation, there was a discussion on the last page of section seven where there's a recommendation with regard to two options. One was to continue to work to say, we don't agree with the auditor's findings and continue to work on eighteen. Uh, basically, as he stated, having to rebuild transaction by transaction again through every transaction through the treasurer's office. Or understanding where we are, accepting the auditor's recommendation, and then moving forward. So we need your guidance and, uh.
When do you need that by?
So we need that in order for the auditor to complete the audit. So he can come and present. We need to know where you are to make that recommendation to the auditor. Our recommendation is to take the second option, accept where we are, and begin to focus on nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Is this what the, I'm sorry, can I ask a question for in point of information? When did the auditor, when did you know that the auditors needed this in order to close the audit?
When we found out the, we, we got the auditor, the information, we met with each department.
What day was that? How long has it been?
I don't remember the day off the top of my head.
Has it been a month? Has it been a week? Has it been yesterday?
It wasn't yesterday, it wasn't yesterday. Let's see. Dial back a week. Uh, we talked with departments about the findings for each that affected departments. Would talk, talk with those directors to get them to agree to moving forward. But this one, we need counsel. That's why it's in the packet this evening to get counsel so we can complete the audit and move forward. Otherwise, if we, if we take option one and we want to disagree with the auditor.
Mr. Mr. Altman, I'm just going to ask you this. Per the, the finance, right, that resolution we've had for the, even the contract, we stated that if there is anything that we need to know, we need to know that right away. We do not need to wait until council meeting and then for us to hurry up and, and decide on this. Because everyone needs, if we'd known that, it's not even stated here, that we needed to make a decision by tonight in order to, for us to close the audits. Now it's flipped over to the governing body to make this decision. Was anyone on council aware of this prior to this coming to the city council meeting, that this needed to be done tonight?
I read the recommendation.
I do read the mech, the recommendations here, but does it say it was need to be done tonight?
I mean, that was a natural assumption on my part, but.
Well, the good thi- my thing is, we should never guess. Never guess, never assume. Counselor Pelham?
Yeah.
And then Counselor Randolph.
We waited this long anyway, so why can't we wait till the auditors come on the twenty-eighth and then be ready to make?
They're not going to come.
Huh? He's saying not coming.
He, he won't be able to come.
If what? Tell what you say, Mr. Terry, if you will.
Ma'am?
Can you say, what did you say?
Okay.
Can he speak?
I'm going back and I'm looking at the calendar. I believe we had a meeting on the twenty-fourth. There was discussions that.
Twenty-fourth of August?
Yes. And if I recall, the, the requirements was that I needed to produce any and everything, and we produced for you the draft. We talked about that the auditor was going through the draft financials, but he also was working through rendering his draft audit opinions and all this stuff that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I believe we indicated that according to council's schedule, your meeting was for September fourteenth, which we are here.
Mm-hmm.
And what I remember committing to you all is that we would be taking whatever the auditor is providing us and going through and talking to the treasurer, the schools, everybody that we needed to talk to, to make sure that we all felt comfortable. Because the goal was that on the twenty-eighth, for the auditor to be able to come in, that we would have needed to signed off. If we are not going to sign off, then we got to take a step back and tell the auditor, we're going to leave the audit open. We have to go from there. And so this is the fourteenth meeting. We started this discussion back on the twenty-fourth. I was definitely charged, at least by the city manager, to make sure I got out and start talking to as many people that this report was pertaining to, and we've done a very good job of that. We've had a lot of input from schools. So in order for the auditor to come with his presentation to council on twenty-eighth of September, then there has to be a determination whether you want the audit to stay open. That's what you need to note. That's why option one is.
After we talk to the auditor, can't we make that decision?
Wait, is there a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss personnel?
If you want to motion, I'll make it.
What? For what? That way we're not talking about this in front of the public. Because my question to you is, when there, in, with, per your contract, if there's something that was immediate, needed immediate attention by the city council that you were to let us know within twenty, was it twenty-four hours? I'm going to look at your contract, so I'm asking if there is a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel.
I make the motion.
Performance.
So move.
Second, motion's been made by Counselor Pelham, seconded by myself, Patience Bennett. Roll call.
Counselor Gore?
Um, yeah.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
No.
Mayor Bennett, you have four to three. Motion passes.
Madam City Attorney?
Okay. So lively there. I'm so afraid. Mr. Terry's going to come back, yeah?
You won't put them up now. Just have these. And I'm going to say you can't use the screen because the presentation is.
Are you calling? Yeah, I, hold on. Um, someone's got to take the motion. She's continuing the meetings.
We need to look at it, um, so if they may continue to.
Sorry. So, hey, sorry.
Huh? What we did?
They just, yeah, they just went back in the closest.
Yeah, so we, we highlighted all the drainage areas.
Oh, I was talking to Auntie.
Oh, it's just a delay. Yes, a delay.
I'm doing it from ten to whenever I.
Whenever they go to lunch.
Yeah.
By the way, with Ian Jackson, I had tried later on Friday, we're going to do the sample on the, uh, brick paver stencils on Randolph Red.
Oh, cool.
And he wants to know where do I want to do the sample strip? And I'd like to do it somewhere where it would look good up against something.
Mm-hmm.
And I was thinking about. And I was thinking about, oh, in front of that gray building, you know, the building that uh that guy remodeled.
Oh, yeah, he's right. Who was? He was right there. No, he he was.
The guy that did the Marks and Harrison building. Yeah.
He wants you, you're going to speak on this.
But anyway, I'm a, the thing of it is, the easier place to do it.
No, Mr. Bosch is the guy who did with the Har- Marks and Harrison.
We're we're going with a real pinkish red brick look. I like that, and he doesn't have the pigment. Mike's just like comes in already.
They should be back on the circuit, but nobody can hear me right.
Second.
With the with the intention of going back in after discuss- open discussion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Motion's been made to come out of closed meeting by Counselor Pelham, seconded by Counselor Gore. Is there any discussion?
Did you say roll call?
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yeah.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven to zero, motion passes.
Please read the certification.
Certification pursuant pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one two D. Where only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yeah.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have six to one, motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to extend our meeting uh to include communication from citizens because we do have a couple of citizens who want to speak.
Second. And can you recite the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we-
No, the clerk.
Motion made to extend the meeting to inclu- to include communication from citizens.
I would like extend. To go between the closed session.
To go, well, yeah, to extend the meeting, to go back into closed session. After, can we hear from communication from citizens first?
I would like to ask for a friendly, can we s- let the citizens speak prior to us going back into closed?
Yes, that's, I I change. I'd like to change my motion to include letting the citizens speak before we go back into closed meeting. Extending the meeting and then going back into closed session.
Second.
Who did the second? Do you agree?
Yeah, because you need clarity on the motion.
So you're saying extend the meeting until we finish this one item?
Item plus the plus the citizens speaking.
Right, right, okay.
Roll call. Oh, is there a motion? Did you light your light?
I wanted to discuss one thing.
Okay.
I like the city manager. There were a couple times sensitive.
Madam Mayor. Um, based on the re um structuring of the agenda, um, I hate to tell you this, but there's gonna have to be a motion to amend the agenda to move the uh communications from citizens from the place from which it was originally approved with the the agenda. So I don't know where you want it exactly, uh Counselor Pelham, but you need to be a little bit more precise where you want this to land.
Am I allowed to do a friendly amendment or ask a question?
I can just change it.
To amend the agenda to allow communications from citizens and the public hearing because we are on a timeline for that.
Okay.
And then closed session.
Yes, this, is that sufficient, Madam Attorney?
Point of word, can we just make a motion to extend the meeting, period, and then we can go back and do this other stuff? We just make this code in.
That might be smart.
Motion's on the floor to extend the meeting.
Did you change in it?
Yes.
To extend the meeting to when?
What are we doing?
Extend the meeting.
Just to extend the meeting.
Just extend it?
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a time? We'll go back and do the. Is that sufficient, Madam City Attorney? Roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
No.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
No.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have five to two, motion passes.
Thank you. Now you guys do your.
Now.
Is there a um motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, I would like to make the amendment to amend the agenda for communication from citizens and all sensitive items on the agenda that, you gotta name it?
Yes.
The pop- okay.
I'd like to make the motion that we amend the agenda in the order of communication from citizens, public hearings, and closed session.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Pelham, seconded by Counselor Gore. Counselor Denton.
It was in reverse.
Um, my question is to the city manager.
Can you put your mic down? Can you put your mic down?
My question is to the city manager. Do you have a time sensitive item on the agenda that we need to address tonight?
The one item that we have uh that I was at gonna ask for action is the opioid settlement, but it, I think that can wait till the twenty eighth. We can wait.
We can wait.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can you have that, I made that motion, right?
Yeah, I just waited.
I have that you made the motion.
The opioid item.
Gotta call for a vote, please, to get this show on the road.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
No.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
I'm sorry, what were we voting? I'm sorry, I had to get the bandit the first time and get my book the second time. Is this just to amend, or was this what? What you said? To do, yeah, what I said, the communications, public hearings and that, yeah.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have six to one, motion passes.
Thank you. Right, at this time, we'd like to allow communications from citizens. Madam Clerk, if you would read the disclaimer.
Yes. A communication from citizens, period, limited in total time to thirty minutes in part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing council shall approach the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. Our remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the mayor only, and there shall be no discussion without permission of the mayor. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council.
Thank you. Ms. Emily DeCarlo. Mr. Bruce Ayala.
My name is Bruce Allen Ayala. I'm.
Talking to Mike, Mr. Ayala.
Pardon?
Put the mic to you, closer to your mouth, if you don't mind. There you go.
My name's Bruce Allen Ayala, and I'm Ward Six. And I'd like to address the mayor, the vice mayor, and Ms. Pelham, and the rest of the council. What I'm, what I'm addressing is the fact that I believe that we need to uh to have uh neighborhood watch uh reenacted in my neighborhood and in Hopewell. Uh, I have a, I believe I have a drug problem directly across the street from me. I've addressed it with the police. They told me without evidence, I need to talk to the owner. I've talked to the owner. The owner told me, talk to the police. I'm trying to talk to my my counselor. And now I'm addressing the mayor and the vice mayor and the rest of the council to please ask for help and have a neighborhood watch established. We have drugs across the street and three blocks up. And I live right where Officer Barry was mer- murdered one street over here a couple of years ago. My nephew was murdered uh on Sixteenth Street over drugs. My uh son died over cocaine and drugs because my wife was doing them. And so therefore, I'm emphatic against drugs, especially cocaine. And that that's it.
And Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
And I would just like to publicly apologize to Mr. Ayala, uh because he did call me a week ago and I was neg- negligible to not speak uh with the chief and the young man that uh heads the neighborhood watch. And I've spoke, told you that already, but anyway, we will get to that tomorrow. So I publicly apologize for my sloveness, and uh it will be taken care so that you won't have to come before the entire council again.
If need be, I'd like to volunteer to be on the neighborhood watch also.
You will be. Hopefully, yes.
I would like, I would love that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Altman.
Uh, Mr. Ayala, what what street do you live on?
Or do you wanna just give it to, wait?
Stewart Avenue.
Stewart, okay. Yeah, can we just, we we'll just be a little more discreet.
Just talk to him personally.
Yeah.
Mr. Altman will get your information. And then, you know, we'll talk offline. That way, you know, it seems like there's a lot going on and we don't want to, you know, broadcast it.
Six people, and together, we were all speaking, and now they don't wanna talk 'cause they got scared. I'm the youngest, and most of them are eighty to ninety years old in our neighborhood.
Okay, I'll I'll get with you in a minute.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wayne Walton.
You love that.
Okay. Mr. Gerald Bosch.
Hi, my name's Gerald Bosch. I uh live in Midlothian, but I own commercial properties here in Hopewell. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I can't.
No can't? And um and the properties are in Ward One. Um, I started investing in Hopewell in twenty sixteen. Uh, purchased the building at three twenty East Broadway, uh which is commonly known around here as the Marks and Harrison Building, uh 'cause they occupied it for thirty, forty years. Um, and I'm specifically here to talk about the facade improvement program. That was an important part of what we did with that building. Um, and it's lost its funding last year, and I'm here to ask you guys to restore that funding.
We did.
Because um I've invested in another property right across the street from City Hall at two oh one East Broadway. First of all, I wanna explain how how the facade improvement program works and why I think it's such a good idea for the city of Hopewell to continue investing in it. So when we bought the building in twenty sixteen, it had been neglected. This is at three twenty East Broadway, right across from Social Services. It's a uh unusual building because it had made a brick and masonry, stone and glass, um had a distinctive front, but it had gone into disrepair. It was all overgrown. It was kind of an eyesore. They'd put a lean-to on the front of it and the brick steps, and it was not an easy building to access anymore. So first step in twenty sixteen was to upgrade the facade, make it look presentable again, clean it all up. We added an ADA compliant ramp. We put ADA compliant door closers on it. So we had um a building that was functional again and an asset to the city. And that cost about nineteen thousand dollars, of which I got seventy-five hundred dollars as a rebate from the city through the facade improvement program. And that was a very, that seventy-five hundred dollars doesn't sound like a whole lot in the big scheme of things, how much I spent, but that was a very important part of our decision process and what to do with that building at the time. For example, the ADA compliant doors, in order to fix the fix the building so it would be ADA compliant again, we had to put in a ramp, and we had to do something with that lean-to that they'd added to the building. We got rid of it, and we put the door closers on to make the doors ADA compliant. So you press a button in the outside, the doors open up. You know, you walk inside, press a button to go back out. Because the doors are not thirty-six inches each, that was the only way to make them ADA compliant. That's about thirty-five hundred bucks, just to do that one little door closer thing, thirty-five hundred bucks. So when you're spending a lot of money on an empty building, knowing that you're gonna get something back from the city at some point down the road, makes a big difference in how you make that decision. I'm glad I'd made, I'm glad we did it. And fast forward five years later, uh Friedman Point, uh which is a real credit to the city, their whole downstairs commercial space was taken over by Community Transformers. Some of you may have gone to the open house there a few weeks ago. It's a real credit to the city, that that building. Community Transformers came to the city of of Hopewell um because of that facade improvement program. The reason I say that is 'cause in twenty eighteen, when they first uh started business here in Hopewell, the gentleman that owned that company, he had kind of retired, wasn't sure what he was gonna do next. He saw pictures of the building, and he saw that it was ADA compliant, and he said, well, this building looks great, and it's only, you know, ten, less than ten minutes from my house. I'm gonna go down there and look at it, and and he ended up renting space for me because it was an attractive building, because it was ADA compliant. That grew, he he occupied one office, then two offices, then three offices. He finally outgrew it and took over the whole downstairs of the Friedman Point Building five years later. Well, in twenty twenty-one, he just moved in. And he's a real credit to the community. But had I not, you know, uh done a good job with the facade improvement program, which again was partly because of the funding that I got back from the city, or knowing that I was gonna get it back, enabled me to spend more money than I probably would've spent otherwise. So that's a a direct cause and effect. The fact that he's now occupying the whole downstairs of the Friedman Point Building may never have happened, had the facade improvement program not helped me create an attractive enough building to bring him to Hopewell. And and um so I think that's an important, there's an important lesson in there in how the facade improvement program works. It's seed money. It's seed money, it goes to one little thing, but that one little thing can grow into bigger things.
I'm sorry, your three minutes has expired.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You can wrap it up.
Mr. Um, Bosch. We would like to, um, thank you for coming. Also, Mr. Ayala, thank you for staying and your comments. And we will definitely, um, Mr. Altman, if we could take a look at the facade program? Okay, thank you. Are there any communications from citizens who did not have a chance to sign on our sheet this evening that would like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move on to public hearing.
Good evening. I will start and ask the city clerk to, um, share the screen.
Sure.
The city has received a request from Mr. Walter T. Singleton Jr. He's the owner of two-two-one South Ninth Avenue, and he's requesting the vacation of an undeveloped portion of Texas Street between two-two-one South Ninth Avenue and three-oh-one Scife, Scife, South Ninth Avenue. These properties are identified as subparcels zero-four-six-zero-one-two-zero and zero-four-six-zero-zero-three-zero. The owner of three-oh-one South Ninth is not interested in the vacation and has provided correspondence to the city. If you recall, you did, um, have this during a work session, so if this is not new information, but I'll go over it briefly for the audience. The owner will use, um, the vacation for vehicular access to his property at two-two-one South Ninth. He has been maintaining this property since he took ownership. Properties owned are four residential apartments, approximately five thousand square feet, and it, the land use designation is urban residential. Staff comments are here, stormwater management comments, civil engineer, city engineer comments, director of development comments. We discussed these at your work session. At their meeting on June third, the planning commission voted four to zero to recommend approval with conditions of the request, and the condition was that prior to the removal of any trees, three inches or more in diameter, at four feet from the base, the property owner must provide an engineered study that shows potential drainage impact to surrounding properties. During your work session, Counselor Pelham asked me to contact the Hopewell Redevelopment and Housing Authority and ask if there were drainage issues, um, on, in this area, and HRHA said they had no objections to the request. And the owner has also written a letter that he would like me to read into city council minutes. He could not make the meeting, and I will do that now. Good afternoon, Ms. Griffin and council members. I hope this email finds you all safe and healthy. I am getting this to you late, I know. It has been extremely busy day. I apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight. I am very short of people currently at work, and it is impossible for me to get out of here early. I would like to thank city council members for their time in this matter. I greatly appreciate their time, and I realize in this day that there are much more important matters that you could be speaking of. As we discussed, I fully expect to have to pay for this parcel and had no illusions that it would be granted or given to me. My intentions are to use this parcel as an access point for the back of my property. I will take every consideration of the other property owners around me when I begin to landscape the area. When I have completed my work, the area will be one hundred percent in better shape. It will be clean and tidy, that much I assure you. I am running out of time to get this to you in time for the meeting. If anyone has any questions, please let me know, as I can be available for phone, um, conference at a later date. I received no citizen comments, um, for this particular application, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Griffin, Counselor Pelham?
Yes, you said HRHA didn't object, but you didn't answer the question, did they have any flooding? Did you particularly-
I answered, I, I've asked them that specific, specific question, and the answer they gave me was HRHA has no objections to requests.
Well, they didn't answer my question. I need to know, did they have flooding? And that doesn't mean, that, that answer doesn't suffice for me.
I, I understand. I, I did ask them your specific question.
In person or by email?
By email. I asked them, and I can read you what I asked them, but it asks them.
Go back and request again, because I, I think that's an evasion of the answer.
Okay.
Because I know there was flooding. So, if they would answer the question directly, and I think, uh, this lot costs how much, eleven thousand dollars otherwise? Was it five thousand square feet, or?
It's five thousand square feet lot, and it totally depends on if you're going to, the assessment has to be done per the council guidelines. Um, we have to look at other properties that are five thousand square feet and take half of the assessment. And so if you look at properties that are vacant, the cost is around four thousand dollars. If you look at properties that are five thousand square feet and have a house, it's fourteen thousand dollars. And I've given Mr. Singleton that range, and as he indicated in his letter, he is willing to pay, um, whatever council suggests.
So between the five and the fourteen, did y'all, did the, uh, planning commission make a recommendation?
They did not. And what I'm saying is, if you take the average and, and, um, divide that by half, for lots that are five thousand square feet, just the land itself, it's four thousand dollars. If you're going to take the five thousand square feet that has a house on it, then the average is fourteen thousand dollars.
So this would be fourteen thousand, four thousand, I mean.
Yes.
We would consider that half of that as the cost.
Four thousand would be the half, yes ma'am.
Okay. So I mean, if someone makes a motion, I hope that they will put, place that in there. I, I'm, I will vote no if we make a motion tonight until I find out the answer to that question. Have, I don't know if Mr. Butler or anybody know anything about the flooding in that area? You, have y'all experienced that? Have you experienced any flood complaints from that area? Okay, but Public Works knew, but no, you haven't.
It's in there.
Related to these parcels.
Right, so if you can check with HR and get my answer. If I vote tonight, it'll be no until I get that answer. And also, Public Works to make sure there were no complaints called in about flooding.
Okay.
Down to the sex, South Eighth.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I did specifically ask your question, that was answered.
But that was not a good answer. I mean, it wasn't a direct answer.
Mm-hmm.
It was evaded, evaded the answer.
Are you finished?
I am.
Okay.
This parcel is on the high ground, on the highest ground there. If you're going to have any flooding, it would be in the low sag areas, which are internal on the other side of South, uh, Avenue, Eight, South Eighth Avenue. What we're talking about up here, this, there's no likelihood of this flooding, and the tier here is much higher.
What's higher, Eighth Avenue? Ninth Avenue is higher than Eighth Avenue, the way out.
Ninth Avenue is, uh, a lot higher in elevation than the alley, the north-south alley below it, which intercepts water, and it's much higher in elevation than, uh, uh, South Eighth Avenue.
That's my point.
And South Eighth Avenue, it, the internal flooding is, is more eastern into the core of that development. It isn't up in this high ground.
I know, but if this is not, and this is eight, it go, water flows down, doesn't it?
Sure.
So how, how could you say?
But it's not contributing, this parcel is not contributing to a flooding issue below it. Uh, and Eighth Avenue, the ground, the other, the lower side of Texas Avenue that splits in between the duplexes and Thomas Roth, it's much higher than Eighth Avenue itself, so the flooding incidences would be further into the lower sections of that community. It's not up here in this particular parcel we're talking about, okay?
Uh, Counselor Randall?
It says in the write-up under this that Mr. Badiato said one thing, and then Johnny Butler said another, but there is a condition in this write-up that talks about prior to removal of any trees. Is that condition part of what he must meet? Or, we, we don't say that this is, he's planning on removing trees, but what is the condition for?
He would have to move trees in order to put in the, um, the driveway.
Okay.
And so the condition is, if he, if he, when he moves forward, that he would have to give the city a plan.
Right, so showing a, an engineered study for drainage impact. So it's already written into what you all have required for him to do when he changes anything on the property.
That's correct, and, and, and I believe that Mr. Badiato also was concerned with him building a house there, which is also why Mr. Badiato made the comments that he made. He's not building a house, he's only going to put in the driveway.
Right, and I believe that's what you told us the last time we talked about this, and you were in front of us. That the house was not going to be built, and that's why Mr. Butler has no problems with this for drainage purposes, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
My light is on again. He's not planning on building a house right now. You don't know what people are going to do in the future, first of all. And who's going to supervise the cutting of the trees if he decides to, when he builds the dri, the driveway? You're all for this, correct?
The driveway has to be approved by the city engineer's office. Um, he has to provide us-
Right, he knows he has to come back to you.
He sure does.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, because if no one supervises stuff, like, that's a problem sometime in the city. People do what they want to do, right?
People often do what they want to do.
If they don't get caught. So, I mean, he can build a house without doing anything, so right now, he's saying he's not going to build a house, so. That's my issue.
Uh, Counselor Gore?
I, I, can you just move to the picture, please? Just want to get clarity. So the condition is they have, you have to approve the study after it comes back to say they can execute, or just show it to you? Because the wording on the other slide that said is review.
We have to approve, uh, uh, review and approve the study. Prior to him removing any trees.
Yeah, so like, the study happens unless they don't like the results.
Then he would have to comply with whatever our city engineer says he has to do, and the stormwater manager says that he has to do prior to removal of trees. It just wouldn't be that he could submit any type of plan and that it get approved.
Right, okay, can you go to, but that's not the verbiage, though.
And, and you can change the verbiage if, if that's not, if what the planning commission has provided.
Provide the study to city for review and consultation prior to tree removal. That has, says nothing about, you know, you're not going to say that.
And, and you can, you all can revise that.
That's out right there, that's a loophole, that's a huge gaping hole. I can just slide right on through. Uh, so we have to fix that verbiage, and then can you go to the picture, please?
Ma, ma, where did you go to see the picture? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, is there, I think there was another, like, a better picture. Yeah, okay, so this is just to be able to have, like, the driveway, right?
Yes.
But I thought we had this whole conversation about trying to reduce paved surfaces in the city, and that's why we have all these other options. And we talked about the whole stormwater thing, and that's why I'm not really in favor of this, because it got, it kind of goes counter to what we've been saying this whole time, so.
Well, he uses this as a driveway already. He just wants to have a, a paved driveway, which most, which, when people build houses, they usually put in a paved driveway anyway. So he just wants a paved driveway, but he uses this as access already to, to-two-one South Ninth.
But is it already, I thought it was, uh, uh, um, the one that's in between, it's not improved all the way, but it's not just dirt.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I thought there was gravel or something down here.
No, not, not here.
It's just grass?
Let me add one thing on the driveway. This road now-
But can I just get clarity on what, what's on it now?
Excuse me?
I was asking her, what is this surf?
It's got a gravel surface that he's been using going in and out, and, and, but this road now has, it, it has turn, radius curve turning in and just stops. What he'll be required to do is, when he comes in for a driveway permit, he'll be required to connect that curve and put a driveway entrance in, which thereby really intercepts any drainage going across that property and contributing any more of the road drainage onto that property. And we have a drainage system in place now, a curb and gutter system, down the block on each end. This is at the high point, and when he closes the curb, puts the entrance apron in, the drainage is going to split and go to the two inlets that are already there that convey the drainage to an outfall system that's below the surface.
So it's just going to push the water to both, to the, either end where it can properly drain?
This, that, this location is at the, really, the high point of the drainage spread. So when he closes it off, puts the apron, there's going to be less water that goes on this piece of Texas Street than's going there right now. It's not much that goes there now, because it's at the high point and splits.
What was the issue with Badiato then? Because he, I mean, you can't really speak for him, but, I mean, you guys know what you disagree on.
I can somewhat, and I tried last time. Joe and I, we both had the same viewpoint on this, that we do not like closing right-ofways, alley right-ofways, or easements, or street right-ofways, paper right-ofways. We do not like closing them until we take a close look at them. So as a blanket statement, we don't like closing them. But I, in turn, go and look at this case and see, does it fit any of those qualifiers of why we wouldn't want it closed? Because it might have some purpose and need later. My viewpoint, in looking at this now, it's not likely to have any purpose or need later for drainage, because it's up here at the high ground, and it's not going to be contributing any more than the runoff that's there now. And the north-south alley between Eighth Avenue down here and Ninth here, the alley that runs in between them, really intercepts the drainage, and if we ever did a drainage improvement, we would use the alley. That's the important, that, if, if, if he wanted to close the alley, I would be here saying, no.
You weren't here when this was presented to us last time, right?
I was here, and I'm saying the same thing I'm saying right now. I was, it's just okay.
I don't remember you saying that part, that's why I'm asking the question.
Can I interject something, too?
But I, I just want to, you know, um, I think I'm being clear. I think I, I, I hope I can make you understand that this, if it had a purpose, I would be saying so. I don't think it does. Not, not for future utility extension or drainage improvements, because it splits the drainage at that high.
Yeah, Mr. Butler, did you check with HRHA and their plans to, uh, renovate, uh?
Counselor Pelham, I, I actually just sat down, um-
I have three times?
No, this is a informational, so there's no, um, rule, as so many times you can speak, but I'm just going to go on the rounds. Um, next would be, uh-
I'm sorry.
Parton, and then, I've seen your item, so you're next. You're like, okay? Vice Mayor Parton, and then Counselor Pelham.
Um, thank you. So, Mr. Butler, I think, you know, a lot of this is ending up, um, you know, just talking about just the, the drainage impact, and really and truly, I mean, this is kind of like what, I think what you, you and, I don't know if, you know, Joe annotated it very well, but, I mean, it's, you know, very negligible when you look at it in the grand scheme of things, when you're splitting flow two different ways. Right. And so, um, you know, if city council has, you know, a major concern with this, I mean, you know, I would, it, once we, you know, close the public hearing and everything, I think it might be a good idea that we sell the land, and then, you know, what we decide to sell it for, we could actually use that money for a drainage improvement, uh, project, you know, that was presented in our category one table, that's, you know, as close in the neighborhood as possible.
And it could be doing an improvement in the alley that's behind it to improve the, the drainage ditch that's in the out.
Right.
You know, it could-
I mean, I think that this would actually give us money to do a drainage improvement project for the city of Hopewell.
I mean, if you want to target it for that, but I think it goes into a pot, and we just solve problems all over.
Yeah, but I can agree with that.
I mean, I, I wouldn't be so strong about my viewpoint on this if-
It's strong today. I forgot that you came here, my bad.
Counselor Pelham?
Is what Joe and I talked about. With this case, I, I have to be fair and honest. In this case, I don't see the, the same situation.
Stick around for ten years, at, when, ten-year flood plan, okay? We'll watch it. If it overflows, we'll bill you. How about that?
Take a, oh, take a plan.
Okay, so, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and move on. Is there any other questions or comments? Is there any questions or comments prior to us opening the public hearing? No?
Right.
Public hearing is now open. Madam City Attorney, I mean, Madam City Clerk, were there anyone, was there anyone that signed to speak on this public hearing?
No one signed to speak on the public hearing.
Is there anyone here in- Is there anyone here in council, um, chambers that would like to speak, didn't have a chance to sign the, the list for the public hearing? For the public hea- Oh, no ma'am, that was closed. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Carla. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Public hearing is now closed.
We've already had citizens' comments.
You can open it back up.
That's what I said.
Madam Mayor, can we make an amendment to the agenda again for her to speak? Since she waited so long. If so, I would like to make the motion. To amend the me, uh, meant agenda so that the citizen can speak, if she was stepped out when her name was called.
Are we okay, are you okay to move forward with the public hearing prior to that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the pub, to the public hearing number two.
We haven't voted on the first one.
Are we done with public hearings?
Did you close it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I closed the public hearing. Do we do public hearing one?
We did.
We haven't done the motion, yet.
You wanna take action?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we approve, uh, the request and to sell the vacated alleyway for five thousand dollars, and have that five thousand dollars go towards the stormwater improvement program.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Councilor Pelham. Any discussion? Ooh, Christmas, it's like Christmas. Mr. City Manager, Councilor Randolph, and then Councilor Gore.
So the question is to, uh, Councilor Parton, does your motion include the condition that was included by the planning commission?
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought I said per planning commission.
You need to tell the Madam Clerk what it is.
Yes.
Are you changing the motion?
Yeah, per, um, so that way it includes the planning commission's recommendations.
And includes planning commission's recommendations.
To include. Councilor Randolph?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, I am curious, where does the money normally go, Mr. Altman?
Just to the general fund.
Okay, and, um, so we don't want it to go to the general fund for any particular reason?
Start knocking out stormwater projects, I mean, that's what the big concern is about this.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure that the concern was warranted according to Mr. Two, but I can make that clear in my vote, thank you.
Councilor Gore?
Um, yeah, so, um, Mr. Butler, you may got a little feisty. I still, uh, I said you may got a little feisty, you did remind me that you did bring up the coin part. I forgot about that part in the conversation, so that did address my concern about the water and how it will go. So, um, thank you for that. Um, the only thing I would ask for is the, in the friendly amendment, to put that verbiage for, um, Ms. Griffin, remember when I asked about that? How do you want that worded? Is there a particular way that would work for you? Because I think you get to what I'm trying to do.
The owner must provide the study and be approved by the city? I mean, you just want the city to approve the study, correct?
Yeah, so, and I'm not trying to be funny, but approve is fine, but that automatically implies that Mr. Butler, if he has anything, that he, they have to agree to that before they can work, right? So approving it doesn't, does that, you see what I'm saying? Because I thought you said, let's say, if it comes back and Mr. Butler says, well, they have to make this change or that change, that they would need to agree in order to be able to execute, so simply saying approved includes all of that understanding?
Yes.
Make it sure.
Yes.
Okay. Um, are you fine with that?
Yeah, works for me.
Okay, can you please relay that to the Madam City Clerk?
Um, with, uh-
You want me to read the motion as it is now?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve request to sell vacated alley for five thousand dollars, and the money will go to the stormwater improvement program and to include planning commission recommendations.
Um, with the-
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
And that amendment is to require staff approval.
As amended to require staff approval.
Mm-hmm, for the plan.
I have a question, I mean, unless there wasn't that light on, did you have that light on? Go ahead.
Once you write the motion, does she have to go back to look at what the planning commission's saying, actually retype that? So you don't have to go back and refer to that planning commission? Will you write the motion fully to include the planning commission's comments? Will it be in the minutes spelled out?
Can you please, are you requesting the city clerk-
Point of information, whatever.
Attach the information from the planning commission to the minutes?
Either type it over or attach it, or something.
Madam City Clerk, can you please attach the planning commission's, um, recommendations and comments per, um, and add them into the minutes, please?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
And my comments as well.
And also the comments, Councilor Pelham's comments.
Okay.
Okay, and my only question is this, and it's for the city manager. You're on the menu tonight. So, the general fund, so my question to you is, when the city sells real property, and we, we receive funds, right, cash funds, where do we, is there a policy that states that that monies need, should, go into a certain account?
We do not have a policy that says where, not a specific account. It just gen, goes into the general fund, we receive it as a revenue, and then it, it goes to, it's not specifically, that's what Mr. Parton did this evening by saying, I specifically want it to go to this line or this area. Typically, we don't, we, we haven't done that, to my knowledge, in the past, but this evening, we have.
Okay, well, I'm just saying if there's anything in place, that's the reason why Mr., uh, Vice Mayor Parton stated that we, he wants it in the stormwater, right?
No, there's nothing in place that says it would go somewhere else.
All right, so, is there a, is there any other policy above that? So we don't have a local policy, but there is a state policy?
I'm not aware of a state policy that would require us to put it in a specific fund.
I want to go ahead and take the vote tonight. However, I really would like to drill down on our policies, because when we're acquiring, if we're selling real property and receiving cash for that, we need to say, hey, everything has a purpose, everything has an intention. If I receive cash, where does this money go? I want council to really think about that, that policy. That way, we know, if we all were to disappear tonight and we had a new council, there would be guidelines and regulations. So I really want to let council think about that, we will have to drill down on this a little later. But as far as our funds go, if we were to sell it and Mr. Parton did not say, he, I mean, Vice Mayor Parton did not say that he wanted it to go to stormwater, then how do we know it's supposed to go to general? If there's not a policy for that?
The, the revenue that would come in, uh, goes to the general fund.
So is there a policy that says that if we have cash from generating revenue from selling real property?
There's-
City sells real property, we gain revenue, cash. Is there a policy that states that that money goes into the general fund?
There isn't anything specific dealing with the selling of property. Revenues gained either through the sale or would go just, uh, fine, that was paid, go to the general fund.
Okay.
But not, nothing specific dealing with, uh, the sale of property.
All right, and I have one more question for the city attorney. In any other locality, is there a policy or procedure or guidance that states, when you sell real property, that cash value goes into a, at a certain account?
I don't have any specific information relative to that, no.
I'll put that for my next note, thank you. All right, I don't see any other lights, roll call.
Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
No.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have six to one, motion passes.
Madam Mayor, is it okay if I move forward with the next public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I am here to go over an amendment request for the consolidated plan and the action plan. The consolidated plan outlines the goals and objectives for the use of community development block grant funds over the span of five years. An action plan is prepared for each year of the consolidated plan and details the purpose, objectives, and projected outcomes for each funded activity. Either plan is considered substantially amended when there is a change to an activity that exceeds fifty thousand dollars. Tonight, staff is requesting a substantial amendment to the CDBG consolidated plan and action plan. And I will go through and just give you a brief overview. HUD, Housing Urban Development, we receive funds from HUD every year. We're considered an entitlement community, and the purpose is to create strong, sustainable, and inclusive communities and quality, affordable homes. I've already told you about the consolidated plan, you approved this plan this year on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. We're coming back to you tonight because we wanna change, or actually want to broaden the range of projects that we're allowed to do over the next five years, so we're asking to increase the plan's goals. And we also want to assign the contingency funding that you approved in twenty-twenty-one to two specific infrastructure projects, and both of these changes require an amendment. The current goals of the five-year consolidated plan for CDBG are owner-occupied housing rehab and assistance, ending homelessness and homeless prevention, the general planning and administration of CDBG funds, disaster recovery planning, homeless facilities, recreational facilities, and employment training. We would like to add to this list and not take away any of the current goals. We would add senior services, youth services, services for victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, childcare services, neighborhood cleanups, food banks, and public infrastructure improvements. Those are the changes to the consolidated plan. The action plan, um, changes that we would like, and this is funding for July first, twenty-twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, is in the amount of seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. If you recall, this is the amount that was in contingency when you approved the plan in July. But we're now coming back to you and asking if you would approve specifically Gilbert Street, to the east side of Gilbert Street between Old Iron Road and Den Witty, to extend the existing curb line where a roadside side ditch currently exists. The roadside ditch is substandard and does not contain water flow, and this project will minimize overflow of roadside, of the roadside ditch. Proposed budget using CDBG dollars is thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars. South Nineteenth Avenue from Norfolk Street to Petersburg Street. On the west side of the street, you would install curb and gutter as a, as a gap closure. On the east side, you would extend curb and install drainage improvement, including entrance aprons and basins. This will help deter current drainage issues in this area. Proposed budget here is thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars. These numbers and these projects come from our engineering department. We sat down with them, went over these numbers, and also went over the project so that we could come up with projects that, that, um, were seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. They are here tonight to speak to this, if you have any questions. So again, what we are requesting is that city council approve the substantial amendment to the consolidated plan to add the following goals, and that city council approve the substantial amendment to the twenty-twenty-one action plan to appropriate seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars previously balanced in contingency to Gilbert Street project and to the South Nineteenth Avenue project, both funded at thirty-six, fifty-six. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer, and again, Mr. Butler and Mr. Austin Anderson are here to answer any questions specifically about the infrastructure projects.
Mr. Butler? Councilor Gore, Councilor Pelham, and then Councilor Randolph?
Thank you.
I just wanna get clarity, this is a Mr. Altman or Ms. Griffin question. Are you saying that the money that you're using, seventy-two K, was placed in contingency when we adopted the budget? And now, is, why was it in contingency, because we talked about not having projects in contingency?
I can explain that.
Okay.
So when the CDBG budget was approved, we had seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars that we were going to give to a rehab, um, specialist. There, they were not meeting the capacity standards of the CDBG grant, and we had a meeting with the CDBG committee, and we agreed that we would put that money in the CDBG contingency, which just meant that we did not have projects assigned at that time. The reason why we could not assign these projects was because the consolidated plan did not include public infrastructure as a goal. In order to improve public infrastructure as a goal, we told the committee that we would have to come back to them in a later time, which is today, in order to have a public hearing to approve that, which is what the citizen participation plan requires for the CDBG grant.
Okay, so it was safe, it was pretty much put on, put aside, so it would be spent wisely when you saw other red flags of the other provider?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's all I need to know.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So we, we going back to the old, uh, CBG, when infrastructure was there a long time ago, before we took it out, right?
Yes, this would, for the next five years, if there were CDBG infrastructure projects that you wanted to approve, you could, if you, um, approved the amendment.
And also, Mr. Bowles, their money, this, this project, could this money have been contributed to First Street for the paving over there, or do we still have that money over there?
We have that on a different schedule, and just to report off-subject, we're gonna try to start a paving program in about two weeks, and we have about six locations in our rotation, and that's one.
That's one, thank you.
Yes, we looked at that pavement, and it certainly qualifies, but I didn't realize how bad it was, but-
Thank you.
It, it's one of the ones we plan on doing.
Thank you.
In our fall program.
All right.
I think- Councilor Randolph?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I know, Tavia, we talked about all seven of these, uh, following the additional goals that you're adding to this. Um, have you, uh, looked at these seven for, I know, um, the seventh one is our infrastructure that we would be working with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Butler on, on go-forward? But the other six, have you identified specific, um, potential recipients going forward for these?
We do have, um, potential, potential participants for goals one, two, three, and six.
Um, the, uh, would this allocation for youth services be, um, allowable to fund the schools' youth services? Or is that not allowable under this program?
I will say that we have been advised by our financial, um, department that we really should move away from, um, servicing, um, departments.
Okay.
So, the answer would be no.
Okay, thank you, that was not clear on that, and I just wanted to ask that, so thank you for that clarity. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have another question. Would the neighborhood cleanups include, uh, contributing money to keep Hope Well beautiful?
It could, if those monies were gonna be used for allowable activities under- It could if those monies were going to be used for allowable activities under neighborhood cleanup.
Clean up neighborhoods.
They could, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
But that gets approved by them before it's even done, right, the committee?
Forgive me, I can't hear you.
But that would be approved by the committee, right, before it, it's done? Because wouldn't they need to vote again on who gets the money?
Yes, if that's the policy you want to put in place, but if you want to say they have to come back before council for neighborhood cleanups, they would, they would do that too. They could do that. But, um, because that's never been in place before. We don't have neighborhood cleanups through Keep Hope Well Beautiful at this point.
No, I'm just saying, it would go back to the committee before, like, the new categories, and you're talking about allocating money, if I understood Counselor Pelham correctly, before that money is allocated to any other new groups, it would need to go back to the committee.
That's correct, sorry, I misunderstood you. Yes, that's right.
I don't see any lights this time. I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, did we receive anything for the public hearing?
No, I did not.
Public hearing is now closed. Vice Mayor Parton.
I move that we approve the substantial amendment of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two CDBG consolidated plan and the twenty-twenty-one action plan for thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars for the Gilbert Street project and thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars for the South Nineteenth Avenue project.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Counselor Gore. Roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, um, I'll wait, you have the second half of that, don't you?
Excuse me. You didn't approve the whole thing. I don't know if that was on purpose, but you only approved thirty-six thousand dollars.
Oh, no, I thought the, yeah, the...
He said six thousand. He just says the six.
Yeah, I included both.
Yeah.
Okay, did you, did you approve the substantial amendment to the consolidated plan, the seven?
Let's check the motion.
Yes, so, yeah, so what I said was...
Hold on, let's, let's see what the Madam...
Okay.
Motion to... I depend on my recordings unfortunately a lot.
It's fine. I'm just going to go ahead and let Vice Mayor Parton restate that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so it was, um, move to approve the substantial amendment of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two CDBG consolidated plan and twenty-twenty-one action plan, and to approve thirty-six thousand and fifty-six dollars for Gilbert Street project and thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars for the South Nineteenth Avenue project.
The dates aren't right, but I guess...
No, we need to make sure that it's correct.
Okay, what did I mess up?
So the consolidated plan is a five-year plan, so it should be twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then the action plan is twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so move to approve the substantial amendment of twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-five? Ms. Griffin?
Twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And the twenty-twenty-one action plan?
Yep.
Can you restate your motion?
Yeah, so move to approve the substantial amendment of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five CDBG consolidated plan and twenty-twenty-one action plan, and approve thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars for the Gilbert Street project and thirty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars for the South Nineteenth Avenue project. Is that good? Okay.
I don't see any lights. Roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
I would like to apologize to the staff for not getting to you earlier. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience and understanding. Counselor Denton?
Can we go back in closed session and get, do that one thing we need to do so that Mr. Terry could go home as well?
So that's on the agenda, yeah, that we're going to go ahead and do that. Yeah. So at this time, for the agenda, we're going to go ahead and, um, go into the closed session, and then the meeting will be over. Okay, so you don't have to stay. I apologize for not getting to you. Please forgive me. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that we go into closed meeting.
To discuss.
To discuss.
We've already made a move.
No, we have to go back in. We went out.
We already made it a part of the motion, didn't we?
Yeah, but we still have to do it to go back in.
Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that we go into closed meeting to discuss, was it, the personnel, yes, personnel matters. Does please copy the original clause?
Motion's been made by Counselor Gore to go into closed meeting for personnel matters, seconded by Counselor Randolph. Roll call.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you for coming.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Parton, you got his number, right?